Good evening, Placerville, and welcome to the Thursday, October 29th, meeting of the Placerville City Council. This is the rescheduled city council meeting that we delayed from Tuesday because of the power outages. Well, everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Let's go ahead and get started. Mr. McConnell, can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. We will move on to item three, and that is receive and file updates on public records requests. And again, this is Ms. McConnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one pending public records request. It came in last week, last Thursday, from Mr. Paul Samples. He is looking for any communication between Brian Chase and any city employee regarding ambiance, or Paul Samples, or Linda Samples. And I anticipate that this will be completed early next week, and then we can close it out. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions for Ms. McConnell? All right, we'll go ahead and open up for public comments.
Right, public comment is now open for this item 3.1, the public records request. We will start with...oh, they lowered their hand. If you're joining by phone, please press star nine to indicate your desire to speak, and then press star six to unmute yourself. Everyone will have three minutes, and I will remind you when you are down to 30 seconds. So let's do one last call for public comment on item 3.1. I see no public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina, and that's a receive and file, so thank you for the report. We'll move on to item 3.2, brief comments by the city council. And I'll start with Councilmember Borelli.
Um, gosh, been doing a lot of Zooming meetings, and League of Cities has offered a few meetings that I've participated in. And locally, I attended the sheriff's day commemorating Brian Ishmael out at where they named the, uh, firing range, is that what?
Firing range.
The firing range, in his honor. Attended, it was very nice reception that they had for him. And I can't remember, I know I've done a couple other things, but I can't remember what they were. Anyway, that's about it.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank John Sanders, Old Town Grill, and his crew, and also the Fairground staff, all their help in helping John. Last Friday, he held a fundraiser for the Monument Garden, and we are still in need of approximately $20,000 to complete the funding for all of various hardscape, landscape, and features that need to go in that. So I will try and have something to post back on the city website. But again, I want to thank him and his crew for their generous offer to help us with that fundraising effort. Also, I'd like to thank city staff who worked from anywhere at 3 o'clock Sunday afternoon all the way to who knows when on Tuesday, at all hours of the day and night, and that would include our public works staff and our city police department, all our various dispatch folks, that helped protect the city while PG&E decided to have another no-wind power outage event. They all have problems at their own homes, but they all come in, and I want to recognize the fact that they stepped up and kept city services completely operational. Also, thank the city manager and the mayor for their efforts throughout that same timeframe, around the clock, trying to communicate with PG&E to make it clear that there were no serious winds endangering their facilities here in Eldorado County or the city of Placerville. And also let the public know that I will start tomorrow to compile a chronicle of the events that took place, and outlining the shortfalls and issues presented by PG&E during this last set of outages, and the actual hazards that they created by having an unnecessary outage, especially Monday through Tuesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Taylor.
Thank you. I'll keep my comments really brief, because I'm feeling it's going to be a late night, but I did want to thank Parks and Rec for putting on the Pools Old Hunt. I got to attend that with my daughter, and it was just, it was really nice to give families and children a reason to get outside and explore our city parks. And I just wanted to let people know that in-person voting starts on Saturday. We've gotten, or I've gotten a lot of emails from folks that were concerned about being able to juggle voting with work and other things that they're interested in attending. So there's four days for in-person voting, and you can also still drop your ballots in vote boxes, ballot boxes.
Where?
This is in 1110 Placerville.
Right here.
Right here, yep, right here in town hall.
And at Building C over there at the county.
They don't have that box out?
Drop box, yeah. The drive-by.
Drive-by.
That's what I mean, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mayor Saragosa. I also attended Brian Ishmael's one-year anniversary of his last day of watch, and it was, it was an incredibly moving ceremony. It's, you know, it's a culmination of a year-long's worth of appreciation for his service for our community, for this town specifically, and then for the county as a whole. And it was, we also, you know, the city and Rebecca Neese worked very hard in putting together the program for the Ish Trail, and for the recognition of Brian Ishmael, and naming the trail after him. And so that was a, that was a very, that was a great ceremony of unveiling the rock, basically, or the plaque on the rock, and then the formal naming of the trail. So that was, that was very, very moving, and once again, our appreciation for, you know, for that, the biggest gesture he has given his community and his life. So thank you for that. Now, the last two weekends, actually, the last three weekends, and I have it on my phone, which I wish I could show you here, I might even hold it up to the camera if I get so moved. I have, I have had the opportunity to be stuck in traffic, once on purpose and once not on purpose, trying to get home. And at one point, I was in literal gridlock, where the traffic was stopped. The electricity was out, and it was a red flag warning day. And for some reason, everybody decided to go up to Apple Hill on that day, and then get stuck in traffic. And I was literally stuck on Carson Road, had nowhere to go except for back up the hill. And it was at a complete stop. It took me 30 minutes to get from Boger Winery into town. And, and so, and, you know, I understand our good friends up in Apple Hill and their efforts to make a buck and do what they're doing, and the county is working hard to mitigate some of these issues. Actually, I don't, I'm not going to say that they're working hard, I think it's on their radar, they understand that it's a problem. This is on my radar, it's on my radar in a big way, and this is going to be a major issue for me going into next year, starting now, because as we move forward, as we move forward, we can't start working on this next June when we start thinking it's going to be a problem again, we need to start now. Apple Hill and those people up there need to be brought into the conversation, I think it's a, it's a greater community issue. I think it's an issue for them, it's a major issue for us, and with the fire hazards, the red flag warning days, and then on top of that, filling our community with another, I don't know how many, tens of thousands of people, it is a recipe for a disaster just waiting to happen. So I just want you to know that's on my radar. And I think that's it for today.
All right, thank you. And yes, that, it's unbelievable, the traffic that's been happening. Yeah, you would have thought people might have avoided a blackout area on a Sunday, or, but no.
I think they thought if they came up here, they'd...
Yeah, I mean, they have power down there, we didn't have the power.
I'm glad to hear Vice Mayor Thomas bring this topic up. I was out at Sunday shortly after the power went out, and witnessed gridlock like I had never seen from any previous Apple Hill events. And he's absolutely correct, it is a disaster waiting to happen, and how, that's...
I don't know how...
...to see what we're seeing with us. Question you much accomplishments next year, because combining a PSPS and a red flag with normal Apple Hill operations is, is just lighting the powder keg.
Yeah.
So something's going to happen.
I want to, if I, if you may, I just want to go back and say it's not all Apple Hill.
No.
It is Tahoe, it is National Forest, it is everything between here and the state line that is impacting this. And so it's, and so it's not just a conversation with Apple Hill, but it's a broader conversation about what's going on. Looking for short-term fixes and, and long-term fixes.
And you know, I, we're talking about the gridlock, but, and you're all, because we were all out, I think, caught in it at one point or another.
Yep.
And it's not just Carson Road, it's every road that feeds into Placerville was gridlocked. So I think, and I'm hoping that the hotspot study team, they're going to address more than just the green light, you know, I don't know what, I don't know what more can be done, but we've just really got to address our local streets. It's just, I wish you could throw, I wish you could show that to the camera.
Well, I can't. I don't know how this is going to go, I'll just put this up here really quick. This is, this is kind of what I'm talking, and I don't know if you can see that, but all the red lines for all the roads in Placerville that are out, it seems stopped for that day.
Anyway, like I say, it's a, it's more than the, so far, I think, adding to the hotspot study, there's just more to it, and, yeah, something's got to be done. I don't think a fire truck could have gotten through.
No, and that's, yeah, to the Vice Mayor's point, that's, that's the whole worry, is if you need an ambulance to get across town, or a fire, fire engine, I mean, it's...
Or one of our neighborhoods where all this gridlock was happening.
Well, the fire trucks are big and screaming enough, but the residents trying to evacuate?
Yeah.
That's right.
We were all trapped in our own town.
Well, they couldn't get out of their own driveway.
No, exactly right, Mr. Thomas.
No.
Not to mention just regular medical emergencies by car accidents.
Exactly, exactly.
Right, people trying to get up to Marshall. All right, so, and I'll go quickly, because same, I know we have a lot on the agenda. You know, I had the honor of emceeing the trail dedication, and it really was an honor, because, you know, you have mixed emotions, because it's always a joyous thing to open up a new trail or a new city asset, but, you know, we're doing it in the name of Ish, who had, you know, made the ultimate sacrifice for our communities. And so it was a somber event, but joyous, I was glad his parents and his wife and his children were able to be there as well, so that was, that was great. And do want to highlight Rebecca, thank you for all the work on that, as well as the rest of staff, in putting that together. It was, it was great, I thought the turnout was really good, and it was great to see the cyclists take the first sort of rundown, the newly dedicated, the officers do their rundown and then back, so that was, that was great. And I also want to thank, I know, and I say this every time this happens, but I want to thank Councilmember Acuna for his absolutely dogged determination to hold PG&E accountable for these PSPS events, and supply real-time, accurate data back to them at a local level, where, you know, they're, I don't know where their, their machines are in terms of them monitoring the wind events and different things in town, but it certainly doesn't correlate with what we're seeing, and what we're, what I think every resident knows when they walk out their front door, and, you know, doesn't even see their trees rustling. And so I just want to thank you again. I think we would be facing a lot more blackouts, longer durations, without your help and your leadership on this issue. So I, from myself, and I think on behalf of all the residents, thank you, Mark. You're, there's nobody like you, I think, in city government that has your expertise, and so we're incredibly blessed to have you, you know, have, have these conversations with PG&E, and hopefully, you know, at some point, they'll actually start to understand, and I think they have a little bit, but, I mean, this 48-hour PSPS was just, you know, ridiculous, because there was no wind event. And if they can't, able to bring that down to a smaller area, we have to do more, and so I appreciate you getting all that information together, because we got to take that to the PUC, we have to take that to the governor's office, we have to take that to our legislative representatives, more has to be done, this cannot be the new normal.
You know, along those lines, Mayor, and with regards to Mark, I sent him an email telling him this, he was right on, his report was right on for the whole entire two or three days, far above what PG&E's report was.
Right.
He had it right. So where is the, what's going, I mean, how are, and we keep having these talks, and Mark keeps having these talks, who, when, how are we going to get him to listen to it? I know, everybody's just tried so hard, and it just seems to fall on deaf ears.
We, we just have to continue to, you know, hit them, I mean, there's, there's the data there that shows, you know, the gridlock in town, and yeah, you overlay a PSPS event on that traffic, and it's just, you know, a recipe for disaster. I saw an accident on Placerville Drive that I'm almost positive was caused by the lights being out. Even though there was, you know, we had our temporary signs up, stop signs, it, people just are looking ahead and see a, you know, drive right through. So, yeah, it's, it's a dangerous situation for a lot of reasons. So that's, that's it for my comments at this point. So we'll move on to item four. Mr. Driscoll, we didn't have closed session, so nothing to report there, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So we'll move on to item five, to the adoption of the agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to move item 14 up after public comment.
Request for future agenda items? Okay, so Councilmember Taylor's asking to move item 14 up to after public comments, so before item eight, before the consent calendar? True, yeah, we can leave it open, so we can, we can have a request there, and if something comes out of the, out of the discussion items, probably, yeah, we can, we can do that as well.
So put, you want 14, yes?
So 14 will go in after 7.2.
Oh, 7.2, okay.
Okay, any other requests? All right, see, none.
Um, I thought you wanted to move the report, Dave's report.
Oh, that's right, and I like, that's just pulling off the consent, yeah.
Oh, that's consent, I'm sorry, okay.
Uh, all right, so with that, that was a...
I think Dennis made the motion.
Got a second from Dennis?
I'll move the approval of the agenda with item 14.
All right, we have a first and a second, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? That agenda is adopted. And we'll move on to item six, ceremonial matters, and we do have a proclamation today for the extra mile day. And I will go ahead and read that into the record. So this is a proclamation of the city of Placerville, of the city council of the city of Placerville declaring November 1st an extra mile day in the city of Placerville. So whereas the city of Placerville is a community which acknowledges that its special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service, and whereas the city of Placerville is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community, and by giving wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community, and whereas the city of Placerville is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community, and whereas the city of Placerville acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra mile cities in America, and is proud to support the Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2020. Now therefore, I, Michael Saragosa, Mayor of the city of Placerville, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2020 to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only to go the extra mile in his or own life, but to also acknowledge all of those who were inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place. And that will be signed, and we will, Regina will work with you to get the proclamation to the extra mile day organization. And did we have, I don't know, Regina, did we have somebody with us this evening?
No, Mr. Mayor, we don't. We will be mailing the proclamation to them.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so we will go ahead then and file that one, and we will now move on to public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, and that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. And we'll go ahead and start with item 7.1, which is written communication. Mr. Morris, do we have any written communications?
We have the one item as noted from Maureen Dion Perry that is in your packet, I believe, right?
Yes.
And then, since our meeting on Tuesday, we received several items related to, as you know, the formula business issue that's not before us, but before the planning commission. And we also received an item, one item on item, or one piece of correspondence on item 12.2, which is the abandoned vehicle, purchase of vehicle to administer the abandoned vehicle program, and that item was forwarded to the city council, you should have all received that. So that's all.
Okay, great, thank you, Cleve. All right, so we will go ahead and move on to item 7.2, which is oral communication, and I will go ahead and hand it back to Ms. McConnell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public comment is now open for 7.2. These are items that are not on the agenda. Everybody will have three minutes, and I will remind you when you're down to 30 seconds. We'll start with call-in user one. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, caller user one. Are you still on, you might still be on mute? You're, you're on muted, so you can go ahead. Caller one?
Is it my turn?
It is, yes.
Okay. Anyway, so on item 7.1, the letter about the replacing the police officers with a social worker, I am not supportive of this, I want as many police officers as possible. I have questions on this program, I don't know anything about it. Would the social worker be a duly sworn law enforcement officer? Would they be armed? Would they be allowed deadly force, et cetera, et cetera? I'd like an update on the mosquito road paving plans, and I definitely echo the Vice Mayor's comments on the gridlock this weekend during the power shut-off, the fire danger, and just could not go anywhere, it was absolutely insane. I witnessed two ambulances being delayed heavily on Cedar Ravine, thinking, oh, man, sure hope somebody's loved ones aren't going to die sitting there so close to the hospital. I think you have the right to declare a public health emergency with what is happening to our city being shut down, with that fire danger, we could all just burn to death sitting in our cars trying to escape. You should be able to declare some kind of public health emergency and start absolutely making some fixes, whether it's blocking exits off of the freeway, I don't know what, there's a lot of ideas. And last request, the, the city should change their policy or ordinance and not have public meetings on election day, because it happens all the time, and I wish you didn't. That's all, thanks.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Mandy Rodriguez.
Good evening, Mandy.
Um, hello, you guys. First off, I would like to speak about the city seal, which was changed by our city mayor. The issue with the city seal with the minor, the tree, and the noose was voted on by you, the city council, to be tabled for a later time. You can imagine my shock when I know a strange-looking, computer-generated seal on the agenda stationary. On Monday, I spoke with Cleve and asked who authorized the changing of the city seal, and he said he did. I asked why he felt that he could do that when the city voted on tabling the discussion. I asked again, why did you change it? Cleve's answer was, quote, "Because I liked it." The subject of the official city seal has become a very touchy and political subject. Mr. Saragosa, when you were asked recently on Facebook if you were going to remove Hangtown from our history, you wrote, "The city council has said we will have a conversation with the community post-COVID-19, when we can actually meet in person, and I support this course," end quote. You also said something similar in an interview with Foothill TV on October 21st, but the seal had already been changed on October 13th agenda. Did you not notice? Did anyone on city council notice? This is disingenuous at worst and neglectful at best. The original city seal with the tree, the tree, the minor, and the noose needs to be put back on all documents that Cleve has changed until the community can meet in person to discuss further, as the city council had promised and voted on. Regarding the emergency one-year moratorium on chain formula businesses in downtown on December 10th, 2019, Cara Taylor said in regards to chain formula businesses that the council should discuss this issue further. Here we are, almost a year later, and that discussion has not happened. When COVID hit in March, most of our main street small businesses were told that they were nonessential and had to close. They complied, they shut their doors and city, at the city's request. Upon reopening, they took all measures, asked of them to be safe and comply with public health guidelines. They are just recovering from the financial and emotional toll of the COVID shutdown. Why would the, I think the city should support small businesses as they are the backbone of our community. I do not understand why not, why not one city council member would not jump at enacting this one-year moratorium. One more thing, why in the world would the planning commission schedule a meeting on our public forum the night of one of the world's most important elections in history? Law enforcement has beefed up in our county as well as our country due to threats of unrest. It would be irresponsible to schedule a meeting during this time. This meeting needs to be rescheduled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now taking public comment from Jonathan Gainsborough.
Good evening, Jonathan.
Good evening, Michael and city council. I love what I'm hearing about the safety aspect of the gridlock and the doubling over with the zero-wind PSPS, and I'm really proud of Mark Acuna jumping in a lion's den of PG&E, and if they don't see the light, they may need to feel the heat. I like the idea of a public, of a public health hazard, and maybe we need Dr. Nancy Williams to agree that that, that is really endangering the entire populace. It was, I just, I remember one occurrence of an elderly lady that needed transportation, the electricity went out at one of these needless PSPS's, she lost like $400, $500. I, I'd like to see the city council cumulatize how the negative effects of these windless, wind-free, so-called PSPS events. I just want to compliment the city and, and the supervisors, I know this is the city council. I know this is the city council. The headlines on the Monday paper were that a housing, a winter shelter called Pathways Project, under the aegis of El Dorado Community Foundation and also the Housing Eldorado, with Charlie McDonald, is going forward with the help of Green Valley for seven-night shelter for 20 people. And while 20 is a paltry number compared to the total number of homeless, it's a great step, and I believe God is pleased with the action of the city and council, even in creating a joint resolution to move toward a more ongoing, permanent, and a larger navigation center. So I hats off to you all, and I hope that you will have a presentation from Pathways not in the not-too-distant future. Monday's article would be a must for you all to see if you haven't been able to read the whole thing. With the possibility of a fall surge and the ICU being overrun, we've got to think of the other 500 homeless in the county and the, at least the emergency possibility of getting a roof over them if there's ice, snow, and inclement weather, that we would not allow our pets to be able to suffer through the night. But God bless you all, you're doing a good job. I pray for you all and your families. Thank you for listening. God bless.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Now taking public comment from Scott Soa.
Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, thank you. I just wanted to join the others to request that the planning commission hearing for the formula business for next Tuesday, the presidential election day, be postponed as well. Just seems really important to get as many people there, and obviously, the public's attention will be on the election and for several weeks after to see who actually comes out as our next president. That's all, thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Scott.
206-965, go ahead.
I don't know why I'm a number instead of my name. I'm not sure how to fix that. But this is Sue Rodman, and my comments are this. Thank goodness for Mark Acuna and his battle with PG&E. PG&E is a menace to Placerville. They need to put a priority to fix their lines in Placerville so these PSPSs are no longer needed. And I don't know what, that'll take it. Maybe we need to sue them. I'd also like to say that the ribbon sculpture at the bell tower is really a plus, and I wonder, will it be kept for future years and so that it could be put up at the beginning of October next year? And those are my comments for this session, for this part of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue, and I'll make a note of that if, I don't know if Mr. Von der Schmidt's on the line tonight, but I'll ask him that.
Now taking public comment from Maureen Dion Perry.
Good evening, Maureen.
Hello, good evening to the city council, mayor, everyone, staff. I wanted to thank you for removing the noose city seal. I understand that people thought there may be, it might be useful to have a conversation about this, to get the community involved in this decision. But I think the simple fact is that the presence of the noose on the city seal is against California law, and therefore, I think it's very appropriate for that action to be taken to remove the city noose, the city noose, yes, the noose from the city seal and have a prior city seal, I believe, that we now have. And so I really want to thank you for taking that step.
Thank you, Maureen.
Now taking public comment from Jen C.
Good evening, Jennifer.
Hi, you can hear me?
We can.
Great. So the first thing I want to say is, I didn't copy city council on this, but I am waiting for Rebecca to respond to a request from last week associated with the Clay Street Bridge project, just wanting to get the current eligibility assessment of that bridge. It has been identified and agreed with the state historic preservation office that it is a contributing element to the historic district. It's a significant resource as a contributing element to the district, but the question in hand is, is it also significant standalone as an individual structure, as is the Druid Monument, which there seems to be no question about? So anyway, just that, I had heard from another cultural resource professional that that was being reassessed, and there may be a mix-up of, you know, cross-communications. But I just want to get the current, you know, status of that evaluation, and, you know, I am working on the nomination process as well for the bridge. But with that, I just also want to say then, I will be commenting on the, you know, Pierre has a, again, an extension approval, you know, associated with Cottonwood 46, and, you know, we know that that subdivision is planned for many years, and it is in the works. Thirty-nine more homes that will be, you know, heavily utilizing Clay Street, at least 80 cars probably a day, but we really feel, and everybody's talking about fire issues, evacuation, the issues of, you know, all this fire-wise planning with our road systems, and nobody has acknowledged that that planning was, you know, in the 90s, ages ago. It needs to have a north access egress, you know, that's Poverty Hill, Rotherham Court, you know, I'm just putting it on your radar. It will be in writing to Pierre from, you know, myself and other neighbors here, but you've got to make that a condition of approval for that subdivision expansion. Then I want to just say, I concur that this thing with the logo is just, you know, it's really upsetting because it's, you know how sensitive it is, you know how controversial it is, you know we need a community process. That tree doesn't mean anything. It's very confusing, what is the meaning of this tree? And, you know, it's really, it's really upsetting, you know, that was done. And I just want to say that the Burgess Brothers have produced documentation from the Mountain Democrat in 1865 of the African-American Methodist church in Placerville that burned in 1865. We definitely had an African-American church in this town, and there's a lot of history. And I just want you to care about the history, not the logo, but the history, and not do these political things about the logo, but care about the history. And I guess with that, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Now taking public comment from Adrian Beatty.
Good evening, Adrian.
November 3rd, public hearing, planning commission meeting. I'd like to ask that that date be changed and pushed back so that it doesn't fall on the most important, and election of our lifetime.
Adrian, we're having a tough time hearing you.
I'd also like to talk briefly about chain stores in general coming to Main Street and request that there is, as soon as possible, one-year moratorium. I'm on chain and formula stores for Main Street. I know that the chain that is requesting, are never working at the actual organ and are opening up some of our local shop owners, that he will never actually even be at the store, there will just be managers and employees. I own a shop on Main Street, and this is not how the Main Street I know operates. I, the Main Street that I know has the owners there quite often, they're involved in the community, they just be managers and employees. I own a shop on Main Street, give that to the community, the stores are an economic investment in the community, and the money doesn't go out, it creates space in the community, the tourism that can eat in our community as well, we depend on not to go right back into the Bay Area. I think that it's crazy that I even have to see a chain that is this big. I know it's not huge, but any, meaning we've never been on Main Street before, especially when they're not locally owned. A Bay Area chain that blends in as if it were a mom-and-pop experience is, seems deceitful to me, and I really just, I fear for the future of Placerville opening itself in the central business district, the historic district, to chains in general. I want to keep Placerville eclectic, spooky, have singular lovely stores that people that are visiting don't find anywhere else. And I care very deeply about that. I am a shop owner on Main. I would be speaking tonight whether I owned a shop on Main or not, I can promise you that. I care deeply about the Clay Street revision, and I don't want to see that revision. I think there are other adjustments rather than the giant intersection that was going to go in that can happen. I think Placerville needs to be preserved and needs to be a historic district in certain areas. And the central business district is one of those things, and there are many restrictions on chains, and Nevada City is one of those, Taos, Virginia City, Jackson, these are all cities that I feel like Placerville with the very rich history we have should be modeled after. We should have protections up so that we have a very rare treasure, and it stays that way for decades to come.
Thank you, Adrian.
We'll take public comment from Darby Flynn. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Darby.
Good evening. I also wanted to request the postponement of the November 3rd meeting to a later date. As you can imagine, there's a lot going on for a lot of people trying to get to the polls, and it's a big date that I would hate people to be distracted from, you know, what is potentially a large change to the character of Placerville and especially of the historic district, as Adrian was speaking about. You know, we have such a gem of a downtown, of an old town in Placerville, and I also care deeply about it. I grew up here, and I would hate to see it be opened up to chains and formula stores, especially that are not locally owned. It's nothing personal about this particular store. I welcome them to El Dorado County, to another area perhaps of Placerville, but the historic district is a special district, and we want it to remain unique and distinct so that people from out of the area, as well as our own local people, you know, come for a specific experience that they cannot get elsewhere. I think in the long term, that will benefit us more economically as well as culturally enrich this area. So it saddens me to think of that being changed. So I also would like to propose that the community be able to be involved in this conversation more, and that there be a one-year moratorium on allowing chain and formula stores into historic Placerville so that the community can have a say and a chance, because this is something that's irrevocable. Once we allow one chain, it's hard to turn back after that. So it's really a turning point where it seems like the community should be more involved. Also, this is a very disruptive time, obviously, for everyone with COVID, and especially for our small business owners, and it just feels, you know, even to add another disruption to them on Main Street by adding a chain-formula store, you know, when they're just getting back on their feet and, you know, serving our community is really just unfortunate timing. And it also seems to have happened really quickly. I'm not sure how it was able to get through so quickly during COVID when so many things are kind of shut down, but we also owe it to our independently-owned small businesses to give a fighting chance to continue to be businesses in our town. I work with lots of small businesses, helping them get financing throughout Northern California, and I talk to small business owners, you know, on a daily business, daily basis that are having, that are having a hard time staying in business. And, you know, it's, I support them with my dollars on Main Street, but they also need people from out of town to come. It's coming upon our holiday season, and I know that a lot of the small businesses get a lot of dollars from out-of-towners who come to visit our unique, beautiful Placerville. And so I would hate for some of those dollars to be diverted to a non-locally-owned, singular, independent store. So yes, I thank you, I thank you for listening to that, and I also, I know I had one other point, what was it? Oh, that's it. Also, though, I also wanted to echo that PG&E disruption is, is just, you know, beyond, and I appreciate any interjection, any possibility of having PG&E be held more accountable to what they're doing to our community with their unnecessary outages. So thank you very much, and I hope everyone has a great evening.
Great, thank you, Darby.
Now taking public comment from Ruth.
Good evening, Ruth.
Good evening, thanks for taking my call. Yes, I wanted to repeat, but in a different way, some of the other things people have said. You know, the precedent has been set about an urgency ordinance.
Back in 2008, I don't know how many of you remember, when Harold Ford vacated their building on, right off of 50, and Snowline Hospice came in and had their little Christmas ornament extravaganza, and then they wanted to stay, can you hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, good. And then they wanted to stay in that building, and of course, you know, the top 25 sales tax getters in the county are car dealerships, big-box stores, grocery stores, et cetera. So to bring a thrift store into that location would have been really damaging to your sales tax revenue, and so you enacted an emergency ordinance, no more thrift stores in El Dorado, in Placerville, you know, within Placerville. And so Snowline Hospice was prevented from going in there, and then, as you know, now we have, what, the Toyota dealer or something, I don't recall, but another big sales tax revenue. So we're hoping that you understand the precedent has been set, and you will entertain the thought of doing this again so that we can all come together and have a year to really get the wording together that we want, but put this into place now because, you know, we started with a fast-food chain, and now we're going with this, and it's, for all the reasons other people have said that I don't need to repeat, it's not really what we're about and what we're looking to do. In the time that I have remaining, I want to talk about the process itself. I know that the planning commission, those are people that are appointed by, I believe, I'm not clear on this totally, but by city council members, and I know that when a decision is made by the planning commission, and if it's appealed, it comes back to you. And I think that's why people are bringing this up to you tonight, because it's anticipated there will be an appeal to the decision. I know we're sort of jumping ahead here, plus we're also looking for that ordinance. And what I want to bring up is the process, because I've really looked into this, and the whole concept of a formula going to the planning commission, because there's five or more, and it's, five or more is defined by an outer, five or more stores with a frontage and a sign that looks similar. And so when this issue, 30 seconds? And so when that, that's okay. And so when it goes to planning commission, they simply look at frontage and the sign, and I think that's really a misinterpretation of a special use permit. Special use permit is when something is brought in that is not called for in the zoning, how an area is zoned, that's what a conditional use permit is. And I think there are many more issues to be looking at than simply the front of the store and the signage. And so I just would like to, I guess, pose the question and make a statement that I think procedurally, things have not been done correctly, and we need to look at it more closely, and we will be looking at it more closely in this situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
We'll take public comment from TW Bonkers.
Hey, guys, happy evening to you. I wasn't going to call tonight, but an earlier caller kind of led me to want to give a ring in here. First of all, I want to say thanks to you, Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, and also to Cleve for being very good with communicating with me over the last couple of weeks with some of the questions I've had and some of the concerns, so thank you there. I just wanted to touch base and say, thank you. base and say, uh, thank you for removing the noose. I'm okay with that. And with regards to uh, to Mandy, who had called in um, about this uh, situation, I, it just, I want to direct something at her and um, the supporters that um, are planning on doing the uh, the rally for Trump on the weekend. Um, by all means, go ahead, have fun, but please stay off of Main Street. The last time you guys were on Main Street during Apple Hill season, it was, it, the traffic was backed up beyond belief just because of Apple Hill. But then this whole parade of obnoxious Trump people was just horrible. You know, if you're gonna vote for him, or you're gonna vote for Biden, it doesn't really matter. You guys are, your mind is made up now. But please, there's no need for that on Main Street when we are dealing with what we're dealing with right now. And I just want to remind everybody that COVID still exists. And also, I do want to say, yeah, let's move that uh, that meeting from the third to a different date, because it is the most important election of my lifetime, and we definitely need to uh, to be there for that. So thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Public comment from Sue. Go ahead.
Good evening, Sue.
Hi, thank you. Um, hold on, I gotta get my speakers. Can you hear me?
We can.
I'm sorry. We've got different. Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, yep, we're good.
So I just ask quickly, please return the seal as it was. Uh, it's not against California law to have that, and it was kind of disingenuous uh, to deal with that public input, as was promised. So I just, if we could just put that back for now with all the other stuff going on and kind of deal with it as was discussed prior. Um, also, please reschedule the planning meeting that's on 11th, uh, the November 3rd. Um, when I was running for office back in 2012, we had something on the planning agenda, and our item alone took like three hours, and it was very depressing, because we had a um, actually had a campaign party that everybody watched me on the screen at the Planning Commission meeting. So I think for everybody, this is a huge event with the um, president election, that I, it would be really wonderful if you'd reschedule that. And then um, I just want to talk about the urgency measure, the Central Business District that we've all been down here trying to fight and promote and help. Um, you know, its purpose is to protect the downtown area from encroachment by unrelated and incompatible uses to differentiate the downtown area from all other land use designations because of its unique character. That's a high part of, um, when that formula ordinance was created, there's actually a pretty awesome ordinance that talks about how necessary it is to preserve the unique and historic character of the city's Central Business District, including regulating the aspect of businesses, services, and merchandise, which reflects the history of the community, and which has become a cornerstone of the tourist industry, is an important component of the city's overall economy. And then um, you have the government code 65858 that states, um, the legislative body of a city to protect the public, safety, health, and welfare, may adopt an urgency measure and interim ordinance prohibiting any uses that may be in conflict with a contemplated general plan, specific plan, or zoning proposal, that the legislative body, Planning Commission, or the Planning Department is considering or studying or intends to study with a reasonable time. That urgency measure shall require a force vote of the legislative body for adoption. So um.
Thirty seconds, Sue.
Thank you. Um, you have the, this is the ordinance that you can apply. Um, it gives you 45 days when you first adopt it, and then you, you can add 10 months, 15 days, which gives you a year, though. Um, and you actually are currently, um, December 10th, 2019, you decided to keep that policy open to, for consideration, to work it out with the public. And I think right now is a really important time to do this. Um, once you adopt or approve what is being before you, that approval goes with the land, meaning it doesn't matter the ownership of that property after that, but it will continue with that property. So it's a huge impact to consider. So thank you for your time, and please consider implementing an urgency measure for the um, moratorium on formula businesses in the CBD. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, we'll take last call on item 7.2, oral communication. Um, these are items that are not on the agenda. Mandy, I see your hand is raised, but you've already had your allotted three minutes. So I'm gonna move to Michael Munoz. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Michael.
Hello, everyone. Um, I'm, I'm, I would like to speak to the issue of the noose, and I'm, I'm glad that you've uh, moved the way you have. Uh, the very idea that the city of Placerville has a noose as its symbol, honoring the side of vigilante justice, frontier courts, popular tribunals, kangaroo courts, uh, and sheriff's posse is abhorrent of basic human nature. Well, part of our history, the noose uh, is what we should not pay homage to, or should honor as a symbol of our city. Professor Daniel Gonzalez Day documented in his book, Lynchings in the West in 1850, stated that thousands of people were lynched in California. Nearly two-thirds were African-American, Mexican, Peruvian, Chilean, Spanish, Chinese, and Native American. Land gold mining rights were stolen, lynch mobs were made up of the same people that served as public servants during the day, and participated in lynch mobs at night. I doubt that is your intention, uh, and why, I'm glad we're gonna remove it. Uh, the Public Policy Institute of the State of California's current demographics reflect, reflect a change in diversity. No race or ethnic group constitutes a majority of California's population. Thirty-nine percent of the state residents are Latino, 37% are white, 15% are Ameri-, Asian-American, 6% are African-American, and 3% are multiracial. Fewer than 1% are American, Indian, or Pacific Islander. According to the 2018 American Community Survey, Latinos surpassed whites as the single largest ethnic group in 2014. Some people say the noose is just a symbol of law and order being brought to the frontier. This is a distortion of history. A series of new laws were established by Spain in 1542, and through much trial and tribulation, autonomous regions were created to govern themselves. As emissions were established along the church, the coast, the church and military, and I'll call these enforce the law. California was established as an autonomous region in 1804, and in 1822, it was renamed Alta California, which included most of the western continent, until 1846, uh, when the US military occupation of California began. Law and order existed before the 49ers brought their form of justice to California. During the past few months, the State of California is investigating the deaths by hanging from a tree of two African-Americans in Southern California, Robert Fuller and Malcolm Harsh. This year, the US House of Representatives passed a bill making lynching a federal crime.
Thirty seconds, Michael.
Okay. Yet we still have this symbol in Placerville honoring the murders of thousands of people for economic gain, land acquisition, and mining claims. The noose is a symbol of vigilante justice and significance of lynching by those in California who fall into a small minority. I ask for your continued support in removing the noose from all city images. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Now taking public comment from Kirk Smith.
Good evening, Kirk.
Hi there. Uh, well, some people described the change of the seal as commendable. I think it's more like contemptible. I've described you, Mayor Saragosa, as a man of your word, somebody you can count on. I believe that and still do. And what was done in this fashion flies in the face of what you told the public. And it prompts people to understandably ask who runs the city. Is it the council or the staff? Uh, to go off and make expenditures about a new seal. And when you colorize or have an artist come in, a graphic artist, and colorize what was used in the 1940s as an embossed stamp to certify documents, that's not the same as the seal that's been around here uh, for many decades. Um, so if this happened in the private sector, somebody loses their job. Uh, if I ever seem cynical, it's because this isn't the first time. And it's appropriate for the people of this community to be able to count on what's said, and what, when promises are made. The comment about um, the history is screwy. Um, I haven't heard accurate history from anybody on the council. At the last time this was raised, one council member said a couple of times that the hanging on 1849 was done by vigilantes. But there's no historian locally who says that. I don't know of any historian who says that. And for the person who brought up in Alejandrie, there was an Alejandrie set up for this county, this area. And if you haven't seen the docket, then don't talk about it, because there were no African-Americans executed in Placerville. Um, as for the person who said something about the law, this is contrary to a new statute, nonsense. That's for using the, the noose in an entirely different way, not as something that's leftover from, from 1849, and has been used ever since. So that's why I think that you ought to do what you said you'd do. Have the hearing next year, bring in historians, people actually know what they're talking about.
Thirty seconds.
The history. Uh, so there are 30 seconds left. I'll give it to you. Uh, it seems like, at the very least, Cleve should repay the city for the money spent to do something that was not authorized.
Thank you, Kirk.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, no more further, no further public comments.
All right. Thank you, Regina. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, we'll bring it back to council. Um, the one, Rebecca, if you don't mind, I was gonna have, I was gonna do this um, on staff reports at the end of the meeting, but if you don't mind, uh, would you give just a quick update on Spring Mosquito uh, for the public before we, we lose them uh, as, as the agenda item goes on?
Sure, no problem. Um, good evening, everybody. Uh, so a couple updates on Spring and Mosquito. We're actually wrapping up some utility improvements that you may recall were approved at the um, special meeting held on October 6th. And uh, so we're finishing up between Coloma and Tunnel, and then we're gonna be flipping over to the next phase, which would go from Tunnel to Pleasant Street on Spring Street, and then concluding with the third phase on Spring Street, which is from Pleasant to Bedford. Following the conclusion of that, Veer Camp would then move over to Mosquito Road for the rest of the paving. Um, Mosquito Road, we're actually in, still in the process of wrapping up the utility, so it is not ready to pave yet, because we want to get those utilities styled in first. Um, so uh, it's, you know, the timing of it actually works out pretty good, being able to work on Spring first and then flip over to Mosquito. Did that answer your question?
It does. It does. And what are we, uh, what's the, I know because of the, the work we had to do on Spring in our emergency meeting, how, how far back are we in terms of, of delay with, with the work that we didn't think we had to do, but, but we had to do?
Yeah. Um, we're about three weeks behind. Uh, we did receive a schedule today with anticipated paving, I believe it was, the, I'm starting to look at my calendar, about second week in November. So um, a couple weeks behind, few weeks behind, but uh, we're, they're making up good time. I've yet to have um, this contractor on a contract and have them actually take the full amount of working days.
Great. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, um, Cleve, you wanna make a comment? I'll go after you.
Sure, Mayor and Council. Let me, let me address the issues with the noose. And first, let me state clearly, for those who have mentioned the council in the comments by the mayor, uh, I want to state that this was done by me. The council didn't ask me to do it. They didn't approve doing it. Um, I felt like I have some leeway and certain things to do with, with the council. So, at the last city council meeting, it was the first time I used it. I, I obtained this, this seal. Um, and I put it on some of our agenda reports. You'll notice even on tonight's agenda, it is not on all agenda reports. Uh, the, the logo is still on some of those. If you look through your agenda, you'll see maybe half and half. Um, so I want to make the point that we have not eliminated the, the logo. Uh, for, for purpose of clarity, I'm gonna call this new one the seal, and the old one the logo, so that we understand what we're saying. The city seal that I'm talking about, this new one, has been in place and used by the city since we believe approximately the 1940s. I've identified documents going back at least to 1950 with the seal on it. Um, and I have copies of those with me here tonight. Um, I used, I, I did have color added to it to match the original seal, which we found on the first police patch that was used. And I have a copy of that. I'm gonna uh, pull up on the screen real quickly, so you can see what that is. This was provided by the police department as their first uh, police patch that the police department had. And you can see, it is the same uh, picture with the um, miner on one side and a bear on the other side, uh, with some gold panning equipment at the bottom, uh, around that emblem with a, with a tree in the middle of that. So that is exactly what the current seal is that I, that I'm referring to, that, that I took from this to make, to colorize um, on our, what we currently use. This current seal is used currently for various documents by the city, uh, some which require an embossed stamp over a signature. Example of these are Ose of Office Proclamation, City Clerk certified copies, City Clerk acknowledgements, engineering transportation permits, and DMV abstract, abstracts, just to name a few. My, my purpose in doing this was to introduce the seal that we use as an official stamp and to let, make everyone aware of this historic seal. Um, so again, we have not replaced the logo. We have used this seal and placed all of it on certain documents, but the logo still exists. As I mentioned, you can see it on several of your documents, reports that are in, be in front of you tonight on your agenda. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have about that, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Cleve. Uh, and thank you for showing us the, I know I've seen it up on uh, the wall at, at the police department, but this is actually a better look at it actually than, than up in the little patch on the, on the wall. Uh, you know, from my, my perspective, um, you know, we did, I, I did, uh, but I think, we never, I don't think we voted on it, but I think we had some agreement that next year, we'd have a conversation with the city, uh, with its residents and business owners about um, a lot of things. Not just the, the, uh, old hangtown and the noose, but you know, as we lived through sort of the George Floyd uh, incident, or when he was killed, um, you know, we wanted to have that larger discussion about race and about some of the, the symbols and things that we use in our, in our city. And so, and I still think that should happen and will happen. And so um, I'd like to take responsibility and say, yeah, this, you know, we shouldn't be using anything new yet until uh, you know, until we have that conversation. And so I wanted to just put that out there from my perspective and uh, apologize, because I think uh, we did make that commitment, and I'd like to honor that commitment. Uh, I don't know if anyone else has any other uh, comments before we move on uh, with the rest of the agenda.
Good question, good question, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Cleve, can you tell us approximately how old the current city logo is?
Uh, we've tried to find that. Um, I, I want to say back into the, around the 70s, late 70s maybe in that area, but I'm not positive. I haven't been able to find documents.
So the current city logo, it comes from the 1970s?
I believe so. I can't be sure of that.
And the seal comes from the 1940s?
Yes.
And it's historically colored from, uh, the colorizations were taken from a historic police patch.
Correct.
From the same era.
Correct.
So the concern over history seems to be a little backwards. You were actually using a more historically correct seal? Or a, or a seal that has been in service much longer, much longer than the current city logo?
Uh, that's correct. Um, I can show you also, if you'd like, a picture of the actual tool that we use for our, this is the document that we u-, or the embossing tool that we use that has that seal on it. And as you can see, it's, it's pretty old. It's, uh, we, we were discussing with my staff today, every once in a while, you put the handle down and it gets stuck. And uh, one of my staff members said, yeah, I had to put it on the floor and stand on it and hold the handle up, because I couldn't get it up today. But, so yes, it's been around a long time.
So the, so the concerns about some violation of history are probably unfounded then?
It's kind of proof.
In my eyes. And the seal is here, and I have seen it and has been in the city, city use for decades. So um, just to make that clarification, that there was no attempt by any city council member or, or our city manager to do something nonhistoric. If anything, they actually were more true to the history than some of the callers. The histories that they claimed are actually incorrect. So. The histories that they claimed are actually incorrect. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your taking the responsibility for this and recognizing the sensitivity of it. I don't think Mr. Morris has done anything inappropriate, certainly hasn't expended any funds on it, and existing eighty-year-old or sixty, seventy-year-old pieces of equipment hasn't damaged it. So, just the sensitivity of it, however, maybe to go back to using just the logo, so you can have that discussion.
Right.
It seemed to be the honorable thing to do and...
Except, it seems to me that Cleve had in mind to eliminate, eliminate, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were through.
No, 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 go ahead. No, I am, I'm not, go ahead.
I apologize. Okay. I'm sorry. It just seems to me that Cleve was trying to, I don't know, maybe look at the moral side of it, you know, to stop the conversation about, to, you know, the noose. And he, you know, he, like Mark said, he went back and really examined history and found one that didn't have the noose, and, you know, I just think that that, I don't know whether that's what you had in mind when you did it, when you made the decision, Cleve, but I, I just think that, you know, it was appropriate. And that can always be changed, too, if you have, you know, if we have a public meeting and they're against it, it can always be changed.
Right. Well, and I don't wanna, I mean, we, we're in, John, you can ju- jump in here if, if you want, because, you know, this is public comment, and we're not, you know, necessarily making any decisions during public comment. So, I think we're in good ground at this point, but let us know if, if we've gone too far flung.
I assume you're doing okay.
All right, well, thank you, appreciate that. So, I think, you know, you've heard the comments back from, from the council. I think it's, at least the public has a better, I think, understanding of where, how, and when this, the seal has come to be, so I think that's, that's great. You know, one request I would have would be maybe to have a, somewhere on the website or something, where, I don't know if we can do like, you know, what do you think of it or whatever, but we could get some feedback on it, would be kind of interesting. And I don't know if we can do that or not. And again, you know, we'll have this, this discussion next year as well, but it would be interesting to see what people think of this one as well in the interim. Okay, anything else from, from anybody?
I have a whole bunch of comments, but I'll allow you to do it first, you're the mayor.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good at this place.
Oh, okay. Mr. Driscoll, are you listening?
Yes, sir. I am.
There were an awful lot of comments about the planning commission, the planning commission process, how planning operates in the city, and it's a little dismay, I was on a planning commission for nine years, I'm now in my fourteenth year on the city council. And so, I have spent most of the subdivisions and the new projects and the things, I was either a member to the council or I was on the council for some of it, one way or another. Unfortunately, the same interest never seems to exist when these vacancies come up on these commissions. The historical advisory committee doesn't exist, because we couldn't get any members for it, and we left it open for two or three years, and as it dwindled down to nothing, we had no choice but to close it. So, back to the point this evening, though, the idea that November the third is absolutely one of the most, going to be one of the most historic election nights that this country has seen in decades. People have had the ability to vote now for absentee at least two to three weeks, beginning Friday, Friday during the day. This will become a voting center, to be able to vote in-person drop-off ballot all weekend through to eight PM Tuesday night. Those are opportunities that have never existed in the state of California that I'm aware of. So, this is not, yeah, the recognition has been made by your state elections officers to greatly expand anybody's ability to get a ballot in. This will also be a Zoom planning commission meeting, so the citizen won't need to coordinate a trip to a ballot place and then come down here to town hall to attend the meeting. They'll need to go home to their computer or pull their laptop out at their favorite coffee stop to participate in that meeting. If anything, Zoom is going to allow much greater participation for this planning commission meeting. Just because of protocol and years of the process, I don't see the real need to ask the planning commission to reschedule what they've done. It's been, that, this meeting on the third has been publicly known since last week by Lynn and the planning staff. And I would think that at six PM start time, if you really have an interest to be, an item that's on the planning commission's agenda for their November third meeting, you will coordinate your day so that you are available. But, that aside, if there's some tremendous appreciation or some concern with my colleagues, I would suggest, if it had to be moved, it could be moved to that Wednesday or Thursday of the same week. Not until the next planning commission meeting, because they, they have only been meeting monthly and sometimes not even monthly now for sadly the last couple of years. So, I would not be in favor of, I don't have any intent, I don't think it's any of our business, first of all. The city council, unless this is some sort of state of the city emergency, to get involved with changing planning commission meeting dates. It's set by city staff, it's set by the city manager, the planning director, Mr. Relos, working with Mr. Painter. They are a direct, a part of the process of planning in this town. And yes, they are entitled to hold their meeting, and the applicant and the concerned neighbors and citizens are entitled to a separate meeting, not a part of the city council or forum whatsoever. And that is a sacred part of the way government works. So, that would be my, my concerns on that particular issue. I have some comments in regards to all the concerns about the business that's, and I don't know if you want me to address them now or save them.
Or?
Regarding the formula business concerns?
Uh, no, I think you can make your statement.
Okay. You know, the application, again, it's in the submission process. There's been some accusations made, but there's been some backdoor dealing and shady deals going on, and the city's trying to sneak this through before Christmas, and they're gonna ruin downtown. And nothing could be further from the truth, and I hope Mr. Relos is on the line, because I would be curious as to, the buildings were purchased, they were for sale, anybody in the city of Placerville could have bought those buildings, including myself, yourself, any member of the public. They were very clearly for sale, they have been purchased. An application was made with our planning department, Mr. Relos, do you know when that document came into your office?
Excuse me while I grab the file.
Okay, very good. I can fill in a little bit more, that way we can get down quicker. So, there was a very clear, we'll get that date soon, that was, all of this is public information, both the current owners have gone through, the very clear existing processes that are required, staff has identified that it does fit the criteria for a formula business, which does require a conditional use permit. And I wanna say the conditional use permit runs with the use and not the land.
You just have to...
One of the callers was concerned that once we granted this, that it would forever be permissible to run a formula business.
It touched to the property.
Yeah, I don't, it goes with the use and not the property.
Right, right.
So, you know, this has been the history, speaking of history, this is the history of how process, the projects come through this town. You'll reappear shortly. And you know, I'll just add, there was a lot of concerns about the historic character of the town. And the, there were several references made to the historic district. And I think that one of the big points of contention is that historic district does not exist yet. The last time that I was involved, early on in my planning commission career, the historic district was not created, because the existing property owners, including folks like Tom Smith, highly objected to that level of city control on their property. It had nothing to do with the Placerville City Council, it was the property owners.
That was my understa-, I mean, because I was on the, this last iteration of the Historical Advisory Commission, and we made the recommendation for the district, but I think, and that was two thousand twelve, fourteen, I forget, but same thing, that there was still great concern from property owners, and so it's sort of, it's, it's been sitting.
Right.
I understand that, because it's, you have a, you have somebody telling you very much what you can do with your property. Mr. Relos, do you have the file?
I couldn't find the file, but I'm pulling it up on my computer.
Thank you, sure.
But I guess before I do that, if you wouldn't mind, if I could say just a few things about some of the concerns about the therapy store application and the fact that the hearing will take place on November third election. Staff polled the planning commission at its last meeting, all five planning commissioners did not request that we move their regular meeting to the following, two weeks later. They all agreed that we would hold it November third. So, I want you to understand that. We have received some written requests to move the meeting to the next, to their, you know, next regular meeting, and so we will, we've already discussed that with the chair, and so the chair can certainly bring that up, and will ask the commission, and they can certainly take a vote if they wanna continue the meeting. So, that's how it's gonna proceed. And then I wanna say that we treat this application just like any other. They submitted an application, once it's determined it's complete, we then circulate the application, receive comments, prepare staff reports, set it for hearing. That's in accordance with the State Permit Streamlining Act and our city code. We're treating them fair and giving them due process. And so, really, should, should people not like the action taken by the planning commission? It can be appealed, and it can come before the city council. That's the process.
Here, for the record, does a conditional use permit run with the use or run with the land?
It'll run with the, it'll run with the land.
It will run with...
The conditional use permit and the site plan review runs with the land.
So, Mayor and Council, maybe I can add, while Pierre's looking it up, because he provided this information to me, the, the application was received in their office on October eighth. And he reported, well, that doesn't matter, it's reported to us in staff meeting, I believe he told me that it was deemed complete on October, yeah, it was deemed complete on October sixteenth. Once it's deemed complete, then they scheduled the hearing. That's placed on the city website.
Correct.
Yeah, that is correct. I have the application in front of me now, that is, that's correct.
And Pierre, how many days do we, is there, what's the timing for, when you request a conditional use permit, how much time does the city have to, to, I know there's, there's probably like a sixty-day, forty-day, I'm not sure what the timeframe is for us to, to take it up?
Yeah, we usually try and get it on the earliest meeting, meeting possible, once we determine the application is complete.
Is there a, is there a timeframe now, or is it not? There's not like a set amount of time that it has to be heard?
Under the Permit Streamlining Act, there is, I'd have to look that up.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city council actually does not have purview over the planning commission's meeting schedule. I would say that's correct. They're set up, and maybe Mr. Driscoll, I see him pop up, can add to that, but they are set up so that they can operate independent of the council and make independent decisions without any influence from the city council.
That's correct. What Cleve just said is that they are an independent body, and they have their own rules. So, I don't believe the council can tell them, without an ordinance or some other regulation passed by the council, I don't think the council can tell them when they have to meet or not meet.
Thank you. Now, from my, I don't know, from my perspective, and maybe it's because I'm in the business, but, you know, election night's always a busy night, and if you're working on an election, if you're volunteering on something, if you wanna watch the returns come in, I mean, I always think, you know, we've had such terrible voter participation that election day should maybe even be a national holiday, so we can get everybody to vote. I think it's just hard for people that wanna juggle, it's not so much they don't have an opportunity to vote before they go to the meeting, it's a matter of being able to participate, and I think listen and look at returns as they come in, and still contemplate working, you know, being able to weigh in on this issue and, and whether it comes back to us, you know, to be able to have, you know, a chance to really provide that, that commentary, and still listen to sort of national results, and a lot of propositions and different things that people are, are aware of. I mean, from my perspective, I think it's just, I don't mind necessarily having a meeting on election night, but I think it's just not great public policy, because you have two huge events. Whether it's, you know, whether it was a very, you know, windows being replaced on a, on a historic home, or whether it's this particular issue with therapy store, I just feel like it can be moved maybe like Wednesday or Thursday or a couple of days over, because we should be fair to the, to the people that are actually the applicants, so that they're not waiting for a long time. But I do think, you know, and it doesn't always happen on a presidential election cycle, we're talking about a planning commission meeting every four years falling on a presidential election cycle, election night, where, you know, we could probably move some things around. So, that's my perspective.
I, I would, and I, John, tell me if we can do this or not, but I would support the mayor requesting to the chair of the planning commission that he respectfully consider moving the date to, or continuing the meeting to a Wednesday or Thursday.
You can certainly request that.
Okay, yeah, and I think that probably is as far as we can go in terms of saying anything to you, right?
But I would think, I would hope that the mayor wouldn't make the applicant wait two more weeks.
Agreed.
That's, that's my point.
Because, again, if this is a priority election, because you gotta remember, the meeting starts at six.
Correct.
They have fairly, relatively compact, well, you are a planning commissioner.
Yep.
They'll be hot into this item by six-thirty, if not way before that. So, with the polls closing at eight?
Well, polls, polls closing at eight, really the first data that comes out isn't until nine.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll.
And so, you have really three hours from the beginning of that meeting until the first release of data, so.
Yeah, so if they can, if they can't keep it, because I appreciate Pierre and Andrew having polled them already, because it sounds like they're all ready, willing to work, having a meeting around, but, and it's all Zoom now, there's gonna be no, no...
That makes it better.
I think that's a big factor.
So, I appreciate the thought on that, because we do need to honor the process.
I agree, and I think if we can get it in that shorter window, it'd be nice, but understanding that it's their, their decision to make.
I think we ought to leave it up to the planning commission.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. It would, it would be a request anyways, because we can dictate to them.
Yeah.
Okay. Mark, did you have any other clarifications you were looking for, for staff from on?
No, but I appreciate everybody's time.
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
We make sure everybody understands longstanding processes that we always follow.
Okay, any other, anything else on, on the public comment side of things? How about we take a five-minute break, ten-minute break?
All right.
We'll do that, and then come back. So, we'll take a ten-minute break, we'll come back at seven forty. Okay, we will re-adjourn meeting of the city council, and we did make the change, so we will have item fourteen heard now, and that's request for future agenda items.
All right. I've got two separate items that I would like to request. The first one is, you know, the council had agreed to review and potentially, or discuss updating the ordinance pertaining to the formula businesses in the city meetings. And we actually had that, just so the public knows, we did have that on a council meeting. Nobody from the public or merchants showed up to that meeting to discuss it, so we tabled it. Nobody from the public or merchants showed up, um, to that meeting to discuss it, so we tabled it.
What day, what, do you remember when that was?
You know, Sue Taylor actually, her comments mentioned December 19th, and I think that that was the meeting, that it was from, um... Yeah, about a year ago. So I think we should bring that, since this has come up now again, I think we should bring that off the table and schedule to hear that.
And also was that the planning commission and that peak as well, um, the, this item about formula?
Yeah, there's already a staff report for it because it's already come before us, um, so, but I think, I think we should bring it off the table and get that scheduled.
Okay.
What's your other item?
The other item is I would request that the council consider the urgency ordinance that the merchants have.
About what?
The moratorium.
Okay, so let's, uh, let's take these one at a time.
Yeah, let's take these one at a time.
Uh, so the formula, so to have another discussion, um, in regards to the, uh, formula businesses, which would be a, I guess a redo of the December, the December meeting.
So let me ask a question, is that something that should go through planning before it gets to us?
Probably should.
I think it already, I mean, there's already a staff report for this. I think that the planning commission had already looked at it, if I remember correctly.
Pierre, did you address that?
I don't wanna, I, I think that all the staff work has already been done on this item and we basically...
Is that one like peak and all, everybody else has looked at?
Yeah, it's gone, it's gone through.
But this is right, the, the planning commission, this is...
The only reason that we did not address it was because the whole point was to get public feedback on it and no one from the public showed up.
That's true.
Right, I remember that, nobody, nobody...
But all the staff work, I believe, and Pierre, please chime in, I believe it's already been done.
Uh, yes, uh, ca- council member Taylor is, is correct. We did take the, um, we did take the notion of, uh, should the city consider, uh, making amendments to its formula business ordinance? We took it both to the planning commission for a recommendation for the council and we took it, uh, also to the Plastical Economic Advisory Committee for their recommendation. And the staff report was prepared and brought to council. I think the only reason why it's been continued is because we're sort of anticipating letting the sourdough lawsuit run its course so it wouldn't interfere with any issues there legally, uh, and we'd have a clean slate then to consider it, um, in and of itself.
Okay. So it, so it's being held up by the sourdough and co. lawsuits? That's why we're, we haven't...
Yes, that, that is the reason why staff hasn't brought it, brought it back to, to council for further direction.
Hmm, that's a wrinkle.
Okay, so, so I would request that as soon as that, um, lawsuit is wrapped up and we are able to consider it that we get that put onto a, an agenda.
Okay.
We just asked the city attorney what the status of the lawsuit is.
Sure. Um, the opening brief was filed last month. The, uh, brief on behalf of sourdough and the city is scheduled to be filed, I believe, next week. Um, it may already have been filed. And then the reply brief from the petitioners is due, I want to say, the middle of November, sometime in that date. And then it's set for oral argument on a date in January, I think sometime towards the middle of January. I don't remember the exact dates, but that's, that's the kind of the schedule that it's on. Um, while that, Pierre is right, I think part of the reason that we wanted to see how that lawsuit played out uh, with respect to the outcome of that lawsuit, because the issues in that lawsuit could very well, depending on how they're decided, shape how we would want to modify, amend, or however we want to say it, the formula business ordinance. Um, because there's some cross, I want to say, cross, I can't think of the right word. All I can think of is cross-references, I guess, to both formula businesses and, uh, fast food businesses. And the, one of the issues that's raised in the lawsuit that the petitioners are raising is that the sourdough is a fast food business. Um, and so we're kind of interested to see how that turns out, because I, excuse me, it's been staff's opinion that it is not a fast food business. And so however the ruling comes out, it could have an effect on whatever you want to do with respect to amending or changing the formula business ordinance. We could, however, um, you know, if the council wants, we could work on a moratorium. Um, it's gonna take a little bit of work to get something going, because, um, i- it's more difficult now. If there was no formula business ordinance at all that would have any restrictions on formula businesses, it would be fairly easy. But because we do have an ordinance that has certain restrictions on formula businesses and requires the conditional use permit, um, we have to be able to show that there's an imminent threat to public health, safety, and welfare. Well, it's not gonna be health and safety, it'd be welfare and be economic welfare. So what we need to do is to be able to identify that threat and make, and identify it as an imminent threat. Um, and that threat has to be something that's not covered by the existing ordinance. Uh, that's where the urgency comes in. And if we can't do that, then we don't have a basis for an urgency ordinance. It doesn't mean you can't change your ordinance at some point in time, but you're not gonna be able to do it, uh, and have a moratorium as a result of an urgency ordinance. Did I confuse everybody or...
Uh, so in the terms, uh, uh, health and safety and welfare, so welfare being, um, economic, is that, um...
Yeah, e- economic welfare, you know, the argument would have to carry through that somehow you're gonna have economic blight as a result of whatever it is that isn't regulated by the existing formula business ordinance.
Right, and that would be based, the, the idea of economic blight would be based on what?
Well, in a formula business, I guess one of the arguments, and it was, it's kind of interwoven in the, um, proposed or draft urgency ordinance that was presented to the city last week. Um, one of the arguments would be that the formula businesses are gonna put many of the mom-and-pop businesses, if you will, or the other businesses on Main Street, out of business. And there'll be nobody to come in and take up those storefronts, and so we'll have a bunch of empty storefronts, which can be sometimes equated to economic blight.
Right, but nothing that's based on some type of actual, beyond conjecture?
Uh, you know, going back to when, there was numerous studies when, oh, gosh, years ago, when the Walmarts, uh, of this world were coming into existence, and the same argument was made there, that they were gonna put many of the existing businesses out of, out of business. And in some communities they did, in others they didn't. And there was a lot of studies done, then it came up with conflicting results.
Right, 'cause when an anchor store comes in, you end up building up a bunch of businesses around it as well, but, yeah. Except ours doesn't have any, the Walmart and Plas- or outside of city limits, that has no anchor stores.
It was so far.
Or no, no other stores. Okay, that was (laugh) still, uh, ha- heavy.
I, I think, I, I believe it's worth the conversation.
Well, we should pursue the, uh, formula...
Right.
Business being that the work that's already been done and...
Go from there.
Yeah.
Sometime, probably after January, correct, when the, after the lawsuit, is that what we're saying?
Yeah, I would say, you know, I mean, the sooner that we have the conversation, the sooner hopefully we can stop having controversy every time a business tries to...
Hopefully we'll get more people to attend a public meeting, if we have it.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, so I would say, you know, as soon as possible after things wrap up with the sourdough and co. lawsuits.
Okay.
Good idea.
Okay, so the, the second one is to take up the urgency matter, um, on the more, the, what's been, um, sent, I think, to all of us in different forms, um, the ur- urgency, uh, moratorium on said formula businesses. And I guess I would ask Mr. Driscoll, how does that play into what we've just discussed in terms of this sort of pending lawsuit and then the additional and another emergency ordinance, if you will, or moratorium on, on, uh, formula businesses?
Yeah, the existing lawsuit will be decided, hopefully, on the basis of the law existing at the time that that conditional use permit was issued. And if the council now decides it wants to proceed with some sort of a moratorium against formula businesses, um, I, to me, I would argue that that should not have an effect on the lawsuit. That's something the council's doing now, but it's not indicative of what the law was when sourdough got its use permit. Uh, I think that the court will have to look at what the law was, what the status of the zoning ordinances were at that time and make its decision based on that, not on what you do now.
Right, so I, and I guess ma- maybe I didn't word this right either. So what's the difference between our conversation that we would be having in January versus the conversation that we would have around an emergency moratorium?
Well, emergency mor- the purpose of the emergency moratorium would be to prohibit type of business, in this case, formula business, while you have a chance to study, uh, how you want to deal with the threat that isn't covered by the existing ordinance and what that strip, you know, how you're gonna handle that, yes. So you can still have your community input, dealing with that, may have an effect on whether or not you decide you want to keep the moratorium in effect or not.
Ah, what, um, this is something that's, we have it, as Kara pointed out, we've been working on this for over a year, just getting the wording, you know, existing, and then to jump from, struggling to be able to get that done, to then stand, excuse me, send staff out to declare that we now have an emergency, um, I just don't see that connection or direction to have staff, uh, that's gonna take a fair amount of work, 'cause you have to have solid findings to declare an emergency and especially one for a year, that's a long time.
So I guess the, it, well, and to go back, Kara, I just need you to clarify, but if I get this right, it wouldn't be necessarily to be, uh, to put an urgency, uh, moratorium on for us to discuss, but just whether we should do an emergency moratorium? 'Cause two, two separate things, right? It's, it's one thing if we have on our, on our thing, like an actual, that staff works on and puts together a, uh, an emergency moratorium for us to, to vote on versus us having a conversation about whether we think that there, we need to have one. Those are two separate things.
So I was requesting that we consider the, um, urgency ordinance that the merchants put together and submitted to the city.
So consider it for adoption at, at the next meeting.
That, uh, excuse me if I might, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that ordinance is not what we want to copy if we're going there. It, it needs some work. The draft ordinance that was submitted, um, I don't think it would pass muster if somebody sued us over that and that's when you adopt it. There are parts of it that are fine, but there are parts of it that, um, don't connect the dots, so to speak, and I think would be susceptible to attack.
So, so if I could, maybe to clarify, Kara, your request would be that we consider an for urgency ordinance, not necessarily that one, but an urgency ordinance to place a moratorium on formula-based businesses. Is that correct?
And you can't take action on that tonight, but you can dir- direct staff to bring back a report on that, and that report would encompass a urgency ordinance.
Would that affect, then, the current, um, application?
It could.
It could, depending on, on when you were to adopt that and when it would be brought back.
And would that leave us wide open for him to, for a lawsuit?
Well, I don't like discussing the pros and cons of a lawsuit in open session, um, because I really think that's a matter for closed session, but I can tell you, he does not have a vested right. He doesn't have a vested right until he gets his permit.
'Cause he, he hasn't been granted a permit, yeah, okay.
Correct, and that won't happen until, let's just assume for the sake of discussion that the planning commission did give him the conditional use permit. Um, he won't be granted a permit until the appeal period runs.
Oh, okay.
Which is what, 10 days, John?
Correct.
So that would be the 13th of November?
The earliest.
At the earliest.
At the earliest, yes.
Then it would have to come to the city council, at the meeting in December?
December.
Mm-hmm.
Or November 10th, right?
What would, what, what would have to come to the...
No, 'cause the appeal period will still be open for our meeting in November.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't jump to December at the earliest.
What would come on December?
That would be the, since you could hear the appeal.
The, the appeal.
Oh, if someone appealed.
Yeah, assuming, given the 40 or 50 emails I've gotten, I would think somebody was gonna appeal it. I think it's asking staff to get in the middle of a process that's already been undertaken. Property's been purchased, applications have been filed, permit fees, I would assume, application fees are all being paid. It's scheduled for a planning commission meeting on November 3rd. It was scheduled last week, I remember getting an email, and to ask staff to navel off and do an emergency ordinance. And Mr. Driscoll, as I remember, your time is, is pretty much jammed up at the moment.
We've got a number of things going on, sir.
Yeah, thank you, sir. So, um, I think we need to let the process play out instead of saying that there's an, an emergency on Main Street.
Well, especially since we're...
And the fact that we could also wind up being sued.
And I'm thinking, especially since we're talking about, we're gonna have, you know, public hearing and, you know, really get into this, uh, whole thing, I...
It's, uh, it just seems like it gets into private property rights also. Somebody comes into town and buys a building and has an idea. And if we go ahead and put a moratorium in, are we not in, in sort of a way we are, uh, sort of creating a subsidy or a safety zone by limiting competition?
Well, that's definitely been, uh, sentiment on some of the, uh, correspondence. It's been a competition, um, argument.
Yes.
On whether or not government should put our, you know, the scale, uh, one way. So, yes, I mean, that, that is a...
So would we collect a $10 fee from everybody to support mom-and-pop businesses on Main Street? Depends on where you s- you know, what you own and if you own property, or if you own property and a business in, on the property, or you're just a landlord currently collecting rent and, uh, it gets down to kind of just the whole American process of business.
Free enterprise.
Free enter- thank you, Dennis, free enterprise, that was what I meant to say. And having business plans and, and et cetera, et cetera.
I agree with you, I, I think, I think we should just let the system play out, you know, what, I'm not, I'm not for a moratorium.
I think it's very sad that we had a meeting over a year ago, or almost a year ago now, no one showed up. And then because of the lawsuit, we correctly let it lie. And then who would have imagined the nightmare that we're still living with COVID and the total disruption in our normal processes in our lives, still going on, no sign of ending. So I think we've done what we can with our staff, which is now, uh, nine people shorter than it was a couple of months ago before COVID struck, right?
You know, when you go into business, competition is the name of the game. And, you know, it's, it's, you take a chance, that's all there is to it. I know, 'cause I've been doing it all my life, and, you know, that's the way it is. And you, you just, you up, you do one-upmanship (laugh) to make yours better.
Okay, um, Vice Mayor, I don't know if you wanted, any comments?
Um, there, there's, oh, boy, thank you.
(laugh)
Um, I'm, I'm a, I'm a big believer in free enterprise. I'm a big believer in competition and I think competition is often good for business, good competition. You know, one of the things with, uh, Walmart, it, it had the, it is a conglomerate, it is a massive, massive business. And, you know, there was a lot of fears when they came into town. There was, um, and they actually, interestingly enough, when Walmart came into town, everybody was up in arms that Walmart came into town, the PDA, the downtown merchants, and you know what, they had a price on that. They took $150,000 from Walmart to not oppose them.
That's right.
So they, the downtown merchants actually threw their other merchants under the bus for money.
That's right.
And when that happened, I left PDA and did not participate because I thought that was wrong. This is 11 stores. This, this company has 11 stores and they don't have $700,000, $700 million worth of sales. I asked the guy and I'm not going to tell you what it was, but it was a, a very minuscule fraction of that. And, and that's a, that's another room that's been going around. So 11 stores does not make a Walmart and does not make all the competition that Walmart has. So, um, I'm, I'm going to leave it at that. I, I'm just, I, I struggle with, you know, I understood why everybody stood up against Walmart, but then they took money for it. So there's a price and, and they lost somebody. I don't see this as, as, as a Walmart coming in. I just don't.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh.
Michael.
Yes.
And did Walmart close down? Were they responsible for closing down?
Uh, one business that I, yeah.
That's what I was, okay, that's what I'm thinking. Maybe one out of all, you know, the prediction was, it was going to shut down the whole town. And Walmart even, wasn't even in town. They were.
A billion dollar company.
A few miles away. So, you know, like I say, I guess business is business and it's just a chance you take when you go into it, that, you know?
Oh, yeah. No, I, I mean, I've lost plenty of, uh, of, of, uh, what do you call that? A contract to, uh, you know, public affairs firms that are, you know, have worldwide offices and, you know, hundreds of employees besides, you know, three of us, uh.
Right.
And so, yeah, you, you know, you hold your own, but yeah, there's definitely people that can outpunch you sometimes. Um, all right. So what I'm, uh, Councilmember Taylor, I don't know if you have any other, uh, comments on your, your, your two requests? So it sounds like, and I, I would agree, I, I kind of want to see the process play out with, I don't want to overstep the planning commission's, uh, position on this to take, uh, for their, their ruling. That's essentially what we, if we placed a moratorium, it would almost be moot, the, um, the, uh, planning commission anyways, uh, if, if we were to consider that, uh, because it really wouldn't matter what came out of that. Um, and we, and then it would come to us if, if it were to be appealed. So there's a definitely a process in place for us to, um, ascertain, you know, if we, if this is going to be something in the best interest of Placerville. So, um, so.
The thing that should be, it's public information that their Folsom store is located in the most historic building on, in the old Bidwell Business, Historic Business District.
On Sutter Street.
Sutter Street, yeah.
Mayor, if I might comment?
Yes.
Um, let's just take a scenario where it goes to the planning commission. The planning commission, uh, grants the conditional use permit and it's appealed and it comes to the council. You are going to be limited in your review of that appeal to whether or not the conditional use permit was properly issued under the existing ordinance. You will not be able to take into consideration other items in terms of like we're talking about with the moratorium and the effect on other businesses, et cetera.
Got it.
The effect on staff time again.
I understand.
Going to be producing a document that you may or may not use. I would not support Councilmember Taylor's second request of, uh, agenda, the future agenda.
Gotcha. Yeah, I, I'd like to see it, it play out on the, um, the process. So I, I would, uh, not, uh, support the second item. Um.
Well, I think she was just addressing, because we've gotten so many emails requesting.
Absolutely. Well, and I think we are, and we are going to address it, um.
We will.
And we are going to address it and that's, that's what we're going to be taking on as the first request to have a sort of definitive discussion about, uh, formula businesses. And, and we can, and I, I got a good suggestion here, uh, member of the public, and that is to say, when we, when we, so when we go out and we have this discussion, when we talk about formula businesses, yes, we should say formula businesses, but let's put in there, you know, chain as well. I mean, people on, people don't always understand formula. They understand chain, chain store, uh, and whether, and, uh, Mr. Driscoll, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, I don't know if there's a, if that's a legal definition, uh, formula or chain or whatever, but if, if chain perks the ears of people, you know, makes them think a little bit more about it, so maybe we'll get more, uh, public input as, since we didn't really get anything in three meetings on formula business feedback. Oh, we did get a little bit. I think there was a couple of folks that showed up at planning commission, but very, very little compared to what we're seeing today. Um, but are we getting, I just think that's more of the, the language that people use every day, which would be, oh, yeah, that's a chain store, you know? So that might, if that can be helpful in, you know, the conversation going forward. Okay, um. Okay, uh, so do we have sort of consensus then?
I think so.
I don't think we need, but we just need consensus, not a, it's not a, an item that was agendized, um, it's just consensus for, for staff to, for staff direction on this, um. Got it, okay. Okay, uh, so now we're going to flip back, uh, thank you, everybody. Uh, we're going to flip back to item, uh, eight, uh, which is the consent calendar. Uh, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call unless, um, a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. And I'll just start it off here. I like to, uh, pull eight, eight point four, um, to highlight that and.
Or a brief.
A brief.
Brief.
Very brief. Yes, uh, if, if anyone else has any other, anything else.
I want to see the third quarter numbers.
Yeah, I like to move that we accept the consent calendar as presented except for pulling eight point four.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Well, the comment is now open for item eight, the consent calendar. We'll start with eight, five, seven. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Um, so as I understand it, with a four fifths vote, any of you can put something on the agenda that wasn't agendized. So if it was the moratorium on formula businesses downtown, if it was something else like the risk to life, health and safety of people with traffic and fire danger and all that, you could do that. Driscoll will probably say yes. Four fifths vote, something came up after the agenda was posted, we can put it on the agenda, have a discussion. We could possibly even do an emergency ordinance. So my first request was an emergency ordinance for the life, health and safety of all the residents of City of Placerville, given last weekend's absolute debacle of traffic, fire and power outages. We are all going to burn to death trying to get out of here. Um, the other request I have is that Pierre's administrative approval of Cottonwood Four and Six is not approved tomorrow. I request that somebody on city council say this needs to come to us. Cottonwood Four and Six development was approved in the early nineties. It is the last chance of an undeveloped area to punch a road to the north.
Do you have any comments on the actual consent calendar?
Yeah, it's item eight point six, your November 24th city council meeting that you want to cancel. I don't think you should cancel it. I think you should talk about important stuff. Got it?
Got it. Thank you, Michael.
Back to where I was, no, back to where I was.
Oh, that's.
Don't cancel that meeting.
Unless you have items that are on the consent calendar, this isn't public comment time.
No, you shouldn't cancel the November 24th city council meeting because you have very critical things to talk about, like what I'm talking about. You need to agendize Cottonwood Four and Six, last chance to punch a road to the north so we don't all burn to death trying to get out of dead end neighborhoods. Got it?
Now taking public comment from Sue.
So I was curious if you, it would have been nice if you took public comment on 14. Um, I felt like there was a lot of misinformation and it would have been nice to kind of, uh, uh, discuss that. Is that not ever, I mean, that is an item on the agenda and you're supposed to be able to participate on all items on the agenda.
Sue, do you have a comment on, on the consent calendar?
Are you not allowing people to talk on 14? That's all I, I need to know that so I can move on. Uh, there's a lot of people that couldn't get in on the.
Regina, can we move the next caller, please?
Mandy Rodriguez, go ahead.
Amy Mandy.
Yeah. Hold on, I got an echo. Um, first of all, there were a lot of people that were trying to call in and they kept getting a busy signal, so they weren't allowed to, um, chime in on open discussion. So they thought that they could talk at, um, item number 14. Also, according to your agenda, it says you are not allowed to make personal texts on individuals or make comments which are slanderous or which may invade an individual's personal privacy. So, um.
Mandy, do you have comments on, do you have comments on the consent calendar?
He should have.
Regina, we go to the next caller.
Last call for public comment on item eight, the consent calendar. No further comments, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a first and a second on the consent calendar. Uh, can we do a roll call, please?
Mayor Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
Councilmember Acuna.
Hi.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Taylor.
Hi.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, we'll go ahead and move on. Oh, excuse me, we have, uh, move on to item eight point four. Sorry, I forgot. I, what I pulled myself, yes. Uh, so Mr. Warren, uh, has item eight point four for us this evening.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, there's nothing like good news during a pandemic. It's kind of a follow-up discussion to your budget developments back in September when we spoke about the second quarter. And the reason why we're speaking about the second quarter that ended June 30th is because it takes about 60 days just to receive the cash from that quarter and then it takes HDL some additional time to crunch the numbers and show us what it looks like. So the good news is, is that in the second quarter, we actually forecast to do COVID-19 a 36% drop year over year in, uh, Bradley Burn Sales Tax, which is your general tax of those taxes. It actually ended, ended up being about 19% on the cash basis. Um, so positive and there's a story behind that. Uh, part of that 18% was due to prior period adjustments. So when you take that out, it actually ended up being a 6.2% increase over year, which is great during a pandemic, primarily due to, you know, the hoarding that was going on of essential, uh, products. You had, uh, a lot of home improvements going on. You had people sheltering in place, working from home, perhaps they had to buy a new computer or desk for both them and their kids. Um, and the fact that they were buying online, a lot of people that normally don't buy online were buying online and, uh, we get, no matter where they are in the county, whether they're in Cameron Park or South Lake Tahoe, we get a piece of the action. So the City of Placerville's, uh, point of sale, sales tax represents about 20% of the whole county's sales tax. So we get 20% of the, um, use tax, no matter where it's bought through online sales. So that's part of it. And I want to show you a graph. This wasn't in your, um, packet, but I just want to show it to you so you can see what I'm talking about. Looks like it's going to give me a fit here. It's, uh, can you see a graph right now?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. So you can see that, um, for example, autos and transportation, uh, was actually up by 8.4%. Uh, online car sales continued, um, state and county pool, we just talked about that online sales, 47% increase. And again, because Placerville's getting a piece of the pie throughout the county, building and construction, a lot of home improvement, 13.9%. Um, restaurants and hotels, 33%. Business and industry, 34%. Food and drug, 13. Fuel and services, um, unfortunately dropped, um, by about 44%. Um, because people just weren't driving to work primarily, and then a drop in general consumer goods by 30%. But again, that was made up with your online sales tax. So, um, good news overall, um, on your add-on taxes, measure H, J and L, um, it actually ended up, when you take out the, um, prior period adjustments, it actually experienced about an 8.3% decrease. And that's because, um, the difference between the rate of auto sales by Placerville residents, uh, which we get the add-on tax no matter where they buy the, the car compared to people buying in the city limits at our dealerships. Uh, so local residents were buying at a lesser rate than outside residents. That's why there's that difference. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thanks. Thank you, Mr. Warren. Uh, any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yep.
Uh, regards to auto sales, uh, when you, how about lease, leasing, when you lease a car, is that considered a sale or how, how does that work?
The proceeds from the sale do account for auto sales. So that would include leases.
Okay.
The other, okay, we'll go ahead and open it up, uh, for public comment.
Comment is now open for item eight point four. The HDL sales tax and economic reports for the quarter ended June 30th, 2020. All right, we'll take co, a comment from caller eight, five, seven. Go ahead.
Hello, hey, so hopefully everyone understands I can separate item from item, passion from passion. Anyway, so I would like a quick compare and contrast of our local economics versus the report that the federal US GDP went up 33% in the last quarter. Just a quick little rundown, compare and contrast how we're doing versus nationally. That's all, thanks.
Great, thanks, Mike.
Last call for public comment on item eight point four. No further public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Regina. Uh, Dave, any comments on the, the 33% of GDP?
It's very, it's a very good figure. Um, matter of fact, it's record breaking. I think it's double of the, uh, recovery from World War II, uh, nationwide. I think, um, I don't have the exact figure locally, but I can tell you that our unemployment rates kind of spiked, um, during the second quarter and they slowly started to, um, decline. And so that, what we're, what we're seeing on Main Street as well as, you know, businesses reopening, um, and, uh, commerce continuing, we see the, the activity on the freeway. We're just talking about traffic, people going up and, uh, going up to Tahoe and Apple Hill. So, um, there's some good things happening, I think, overall. I, I do want to point out one thing, and this is very important. We live in a rural, semi-rural area and real estate, according to my real estate contacts, is hot right now. That's one of the reasons why we're actually recovering faster than other areas, um, in the more high density areas. Our real estate, people are buying from those areas.
areas. Our real estate, people are buying from those areas to flee what we're seeing on the news. And so that's helping with our economic activity. So I think we actually have a leg up economically because of our rural semi-rural environment.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. And just a question, when uh, and I, I think I've heard it uh, here along the table is when do we, uh, when does Q3 numbers uh, come out uh, and whether or not that it'll hopefully look similar, um, or you know, if we're in for bad news?
Yeah. So we'll receive our uh, third quarter true up in November. It'll be late November, probably around the 23rd or 24th. And that'll give us the final number we need to calculate the third quarter. Um, and then HDL, it takes them about another month to crunch the numbers, um, kind of remove the noise in the numbers. Um, so we should have that for you probably in January. Um, but I will share the aggregate number. I know everybody's uh, interested to see how we're rolling out. That'll be our first quarter of this fiscal year, of course. So we all want to know how we're doing this fiscal year with things being so tight. So I will share that with the council as soon as we receive it.
Thank you, Dave. And I know the state of California, I mean, they were about $4 billion above projections, uh, that, that, you know, that just rolled out as well, which means that a lot of the, the programs that were sort of on auto rollbacks won't necessarily have to happen. Uh, but I think it's the same thing. I mean, nobody knows whether that windfall, if you will, is uh, you know, a one-time deal because of all the things that Dave spoke to, uh, or if, you know, there's, there's just a, a higher level of productivity out there right now, or um, and I think a lot of it is also, there's been record amounts made in the stock market and a lot of capital gains that came into the state of California, uh, which is why we're sort of have our, our peaks and valleys, uh, when, when those capital gains go down. So, you know, more to see there as well. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Dave, thank you uh, for the presentation and we'll hope that uh, when those Q3s come out, we'll be, we'll still have smiles on our faces. Uh, yes. Um. Thank you. First and a second. Um, uh, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and we will go ahead and we don't have uh, any other items uh, pulled, no ordinance this evening. Uh, so we'll move to public hearings and item 11.1. Uh, and this is to consider an appeal filed uh, by uh, Max D'Oriel, uh, American Development LLC on behalf of uh, Trees Placerville of the decision of the Planning Commission approving a variance 20-01, uh, to reduce the distance from a proposed commercial cannabis uh, business located at 651 Main Street, uh, to sensitive uses, uh, Sierra School and Federated Church from 250 feet to approximately 186 feet. Uh, and Mr. Revaz has uh, this for us this evening. Yes. Uh, Councilmember uh, Taylor will be recusing herself on this item. So we'll wait for her to go into the secret chamber, yes.
Mr. Mayor, um, we should um, explain why Councilmember Taylor is recusing herself. And my understanding is because she spoke in favor of the applicant at the Planning Commission.
Got it. Yes. She does. She does say that is correct. Thank, thank you. Thank you, John. Okay. The floor is yours, Mr. Revaz.
Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Um, the appellant, uh, Trees Placerville, uh, did file a timely notice of appeal on September 25th of, of 2020. An appeal of the Planning Commission's decision may be made to the city council by the applicant or by any person directly and adversely affected by the decision may be filed in accordance with city code. Uh, to give the council some background, uh, the applicant, uh, known as Sacred Roots, applied for a commercial cannabis business permit to operate a retail storefront for sale of cannabis products on April 19th of 2019, uh, per the city's new commercial cannabis ordinance. As part of that process, uh, the applicant received a zoning verification letter for the commercial cannabis business from city staff, and that was dated March 27th of 2019. That letter stated, and I'm quoting this out of the letter, "This letter provides no guarantee that any distance requirements from any adjacent sensitive uses are being met in accordance with the city's cannabis ordinance, and that a zoning variance application would be required to reduce the required 250-foot distance from a defined sensitive use." The applicant, the applicant was approved to receive a cannabis business per- permit by the city council on August 20th of 2020, notwithstanding requirement, uh, that the applicant would need to seek a deviation from the distance requirement from any sensitive uses. The cannabis business permit did not guarantee that the applicant would receive the variance. If the applicant does not obtain the variance, the applicant's cannabis business permit will not be revoked. However, the applicant would be required to find an alternative location. The city code does require a 250-foot uh, distance from any school, commercial daycare center, or youth center, because this location is, is at 65, it's 651, sorry, Main Street. It is approximately 160, 186 feet from Sierra, Sierra Elementary School, which is located 1100 Thompson Way, and approximately 190 feet from the Federated Church, which is located at 1031 Thompson Way. The required distance requirements of 250 feet from a school and 200, and 250 feet from the church is not met. This is an as the crow flies measurement from the nearest distance of the property line from the applicant's property on Main Street to the nearest distance to the property line for the properties, both for the school and a federated church. The applicant filed a variance application on August 25th of 2020 with the Development Services Department. The Planning Commission then considered the application and approved the variance application at the regular meeting on September 15th of 2020. Subsequent to that uh, approval by the Planning Commission, an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval uh, was requested by Trees on September 25th of 2020. So I'm going to go over some of the appellant's grounds for the appeal. Uh, the, the appellant's appeal makes the argument that, one, the granting of the variance is a granting of special privilege not enjoyed by others in the vicinity. Two, that the granting of the variance is detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare. And then three, that the applicant should not have received a zoning verification letter for the subject location due to its proximity to the identified sensitive uses. And with regards to item number three, I already mentioned uh, the caveats that were included in that uh, zoning letter. Staff disagrees that the granting of the variance is a granting of special privilege. The aforementioned school and church are on Thompson Way, and there is a significant hillside in commercially developed area located between the proposed cannabis business and the school and the church. The commercially developed area and the heavily vegetated hillside between the uses prohibit any direct access between the uses. And in addition, there is no visibility between them. Nearest distances for pedestrian or vehicular access traveling uh, from one site to the other, as measured from the proposed cannabis business to the school and the church, are approximately 2,027 feet and approximately 1,562 feet respectively, well over the required 250-foot requirement. Both the school and the church properties contain undeveloped portions of their property between them and the 651 Main Street property. The distance from the subject property to the lower edge of Federated Church parking lot is approximately 254 feet. The distance from the subject property to the edge of Sierra School's lower parking lot is approximately 294 feet and approximately 422 feet to the school. Thus, the intent of the ordinance requiring a setback is not only met, but is far exceeded. In light of this, staff believes that there is justification in granting the variance due to the topographic and built environment described above, and that the granting of this variance would not constitute a grant of special use or privilege not enjoyed by others in a similar situation. The appellant takes the position that since the city code requires that the distance from the cannabis business to the sensitive use be measured in a horizontal distance in a straight line from the property line of the subject property to the nearest property of the sensitive use, or as I stated before, as the crow flies, that the applicant is precluded from making a request for a variance and that the city is precluded from consideration of the same. Staff disagrees with the appellant's position. The city code does not contain a provision that specifically excludes the applicant from making a variance request pursuant to city code section 10J3-6. The issuance of a zoning verification letter was provisional, requiring but not guaranteeing its approval upon supplemental variance application. The record clearly shows that the unusual and unique circumstances regarding, regarding the, the physical position of the subject property in relation to the school and the church would pose an unreasonable restriction to the establishment of a commercial cannabis business within an area that's zoned cannabis business overlay zone, the CBO. The applicant has not submitted any evidence that would show any detrimental effect to the public health, safety, or welfare, or warrant a denial of the variance, or that the variance constitutes any special privilege not enjoyed by others in the vicinity and one in which the property is located. In its appeal, the appellant only cites city and state code but does not present any evidence as to why a variance is not appropriate. The record clearly shows that the, that the intent of the distance between the commercial cannabis retail use and the sensitive uses are met. The intent of this setback is to create a reasonable distance between potentially conflicting uses, particularly in terms of walking distance. It is also to be noted that precedent for the variance was set back in 2004, when the city had an ordinance at that time that permitted medicinal cannabis dispensaries. At that time, the city granted a variance, and that's variance 04-02, for the parcel directly adjacent to Sacred, uh, to the Sacred, to the subject uh, site, the Sacred Roots parcel on the west side. That was for the Eldorado Pain Reduction Center. The distance from the church and the school are substantially the same in that application. Also, the ordinance in 2004 required a distance of 1,000 feet from the schools and 5,000 feet from churches. The basis for granting the variance was identical to that put forth for the Sacred Roots variance before you tonight. And then we do have an issue of standing, and that's a, a lot of, uh, let's just say a lot of legalese and uh, beyond my pay scale. So I'm going to, um, I'll refer the issue regarding standing that's written in your staff report to our esteemed um, city attorney, Mr. John Driscoll. Uh, but with that, I just want to say that um, staff is recommending that the council find that the appellant does not have uh, standing to the appeal of the Planning Commission decision. Staff is recommending, as uh, stated in your staff report, option number one, that the council deny the appeal, affirm the decision of the Planning Commission approving variance 2001, reducing the distance from the proposed commercial cannabis business located at 651 Main Street to a sensitive use from 250 feet to approximately 160, 186 feet, adopting the findings of the Planning Commission and making the following additional findings, that the appellant has not demonstrated an interest that is directly or, or adversely affected by the variance, and thus the appellant does not, not properly have standing to the appeal. And then two, the Planning Commission's decision is supported by substantial evidence, and no contrary evidence has been presented that warrants a different outcome. Now, this does conclude staff report. I'd be happy to answer the questions following um, Mr. Driscoll's portion of the staff report. And with that, I just want to add that um, a little earlier today, I think it was a little bit uh, um, in the later afternoon, uh, we did receive a letter from uh, Trees and Nug in regards to this variance application. And we did also receive an additional letter from the Pioneer Law Group that represents uh, Trees Placerville. Um, so with that, um, I'll turn this uh, presentation over to Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Revaz.
Um, thanks. Thank you. Um, actually Pierre covered it so well. I have very little to add to that. Um, I think the only issue that he didn't address uh, in detail, and there's not much to, really detail to add because it lacks, the appeal lacks detail, is the standing issue. And what I mean by that is the appeal does not set forth any basis on which the appellant uh, claims or shows that the appellant has a direct and adversely affected interest by the Planning Commission's decision. Uh, it appears that the appellant, at least to staff, it appears the appellant is not a resident of the city of Placerville, does not own property anywhere near the uh, subject property, and we're not aware of any evidence uh, included in the appeal to demonstrate that uh, the appellant has been affected adversely by this appeal. Um, I guess you could argue that since the appellant was an unsuccessful applicant for a commercial cannabis license, that if uh, an individual is disqualified from proceeding, that that might have a benefit to them. But in this case, I think as pointed out in the staff report, should the variance be denied, it doesn't mean that the applicant loses the permit that was to be issued to him. They are free to find another suitable and acceptable location. So with that, I would, I would conclude staff's remarks. Um, I'm sure that the appellant and his representative will have some comments that I probably will need to address later on.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Uh, all right. So uh, council members, any um, questions or comments for staff at this point? Okay. We're going to go ahead then and uh, allow the appellant to make comments. Uh, so that Mr. D'Oriel and uh, Mr. Will, uh, his, his counsel, are they on the uh, on the line here with us?
They are. And um, Max, I've just um, allowed you to speak, so you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Um, looks like you're ready. And go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, city council members and, and staff. First and foremost, thank you for allowing uh, me and my team, uh, Trees Placerville, the opportunity to address what we believe is a very uh, important and fundamental issue in front of you tonight. Uh, I want to start by saying that uh, we are here today to address what we believe uh, is, is an error, and a significant error that is facing not just you as a council, but also the city of Placerville as a whole. I want to start by saying that for the past 12 years, I have worked at the forefront of the cannabis uh, uh, commercial cannabis industry throughout California. I started my work uh, in 2008, working specifically with the city of Sacramento, helping the city of, of Sacramento write one of the first and most comprehensive uh, commercial business ordinances at that time. Uh, since 2008, I've worked in over 50 uh, cities and counties throughout California, both northern and southern California. And in my work, I am recognized as a cannabis business uh, expert. I will say um, that uh, you have or should have in front of you three important packets or documents. The first being the 30-page appeal that was submitted uh, by our team originally, uh, as a part of our appeal. The second document was submitted this morning by our counselor, our attorney, Mr. Blair Willough, Pioneer Law Group. Uh, he unfortunately cannot be on today's call. He is on an airplane traveling to Denver. The third correspondence or packet that I hope you have in front of you uh, was a letter uh, that I submitted personally this afternoon ahead of uh, the council meeting. I appreciate Regina uh, pushing that to you folks. I want to start with a packet or at least a, an attachment to uh, my letter today, and it comes from the city of Santa Rosa. And it is, in my opinion, a snapshot of what is happening throughout California. I believe strongly that you are getting bad advice. In fact, I think you're getting wrong advice, and I believe you're being misled as a council. Uh, everywhere I go in California, the municipalities I work with, every single city and county that's taking on commercial cannabis is very that's taking on commercial cannabis is very sensitive to cannabis and children, cannabis as it relates to distances from schools, cannabis businesses specifically, retail dispensaries as they are or as they appear in a city where their location is compared to a K-12, either public or private school. This is often a starting point for cities and planning departments, when they go and they make recommendations, they come up with an ordinance and a zoning map allowing these businesses. I can tell you that in my 12 years as a leading cannabis consultant, I have never seen anywhere in California a city or municipality that allows a distance of 250 feet between a cannabis retail business and a K-12 school. In fact, I will argue, and the paper you should have in front of you from the city of Santa Rosa makes it very clear that state law says that at a minimum, there should be 600 feet from parcel to parcel, property line to property line measurement, between a school and a retail cannabis business. Most cities today are actually extending that because of recommendations, not by just school officials or parents or PTAs, but often police departments are extending, they're pushing that distance out to 1,000 feet. Several cities today, both in northern California and southern California, that are taking on new ordinances for commercial cannabis businesses, actually have a minimum distance of 1,000 feet separation again from retail dispensaries to K-12 schools. One of our arguments, which I think is fundamental, and really was addressed today in Mr. Blair Will's letter to you and to your city attorney, addresses the fact that you have in front of you, or we had as eligible applicants for cannabis businesses, an ordinance 1694. Ordinance 1694 was a commercial cannabis business ordinance. The rules of ordinance 1694 were presented to all of the initial applicants for commercial cannabis permits, and those rules were non-negotiable. Those rules were presented to us and told, well, we were informed as applicants through the city's procedural guidelines at the time, that all of the rules, all of the codes, if you will, in ordinance 1694 had to be met, to a T, had to be followed, and those codes included locations of dispensary, security standards, hours of operation. None of those codes were deemed negotiable. In fact, we, as any applicant will tell you, in most cities, the ordinance sets the standards for the application, obviously the future of business. I would turn your attention to Section 5.28.250, Location and Design of Cannabis Businesses in Ordinance 1694. Please note that this is the business ordinance for commercial cannabis businesses in Placerville. This is not the zoning ordinance. On page 24 of the 48-page ordinance, it says very clearly that no cannabis business, no retail cannabis business can be within 250 feet between the K-12 school, number one, a youth center, number two, and a daycare, number three. At 1651, the property in question today, that actually, that proposed business fails on all three fronts. Another exhibit that I submitted to you in terms of the appeal was Exhibit C. This comes from the actual owners of 1651, from the actual applicants themselves, and they admit in writing as a part of their application that they are in fact, as Pierre mentioned, 186 feet from Sierra School and 190 feet from the Federated Church there off of Main Street. The Federated Church, of course, has a daycare, it also has an active youth center. And so our, first and foremost, our argument is that the original ordinance, ordinance 1694, never mentions variance. A variance should not be in fact allowed. It is nowhere mentioned in the bylaws, in the ordinances governing commercial cannabis businesses in the city of Placerville. The second point I would like to raise tonight, and again, I'm very much hopeful that you had the chance to see our documents, the documents speak for themselves, but I would like to say on behalf of my team that we are here tonight to correct the wrong, and we believe that wrong is very significant because going back in time, we believe that this particular site never should have received a zoning verification letter. It never met the guidelines, the true guidelines of the original ordinance. We believe this particular applicant should never have passed phase one in the initial application process. With that said, I am open to answering any questions you have, and I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Del Real. Any questions from council at this point? I see none. Thank you, Max, and we're going to go ahead and allow the applicant the opportunity to speak as well. So I don't, Kelly and council, or just Kelly?
I think it's council.
Council.
Yeah.
What? Am I unmuted?
Yeah, go ahead, yes.
You are.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members. I'm sure that you all thought the document that I provided, that I filed on October 21st, my response to the appeal?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't want to repeat everything that's in there, and I believe Mr. Driscoll and Mr., I'm drawing a blank on his last name, but the first speaker covered a lot of what I had put in that in that memo. But I would like to comment on what Mr. Del Real has just presented and presented today in the two documents that are, that really are different from what he originally filed in both the scope and the basis. I mean, the remedies that they're asking for are different in all three documents, the basis for the request is different, and so I just kind of want to go over a couple of things that he said. First of all, he basically is saying that he doesn't like your ordinance, that he feels that maybe you should be following Santa Rosa ordinance, and objects to that. Well, there is an avenue by which you can challenge the ordinance, and that was not done. And to be quite frank, if he doesn't like the ordinance in your city, he can go back to Sacramento. The other thing is, on his comments about the ordinance 1694 being non-negotiable, their attorney makes that argument in his submission today. He says, you can't do this because the business regulations doesn't apply to any zoning provision. But then he goes on to the next paragraph and provides what the business regulations state, and what the business regulations state is that you have to comply with applicable zoning and related development standards, and that's exactly what everybody in this situation did. And if I sound a little bit annoyed, I am, because Tris Placerville was ninth on their application process. There is nothing that could happen tonight that will give them a permit in Placerville or make them closer to getting a permit in Placerville. This suit is really about harassment. I think it's infuriating that they put right in their briefs to you that, well, if you don't follow our direction, they're basically saying they're going to sue. It's completely inappropriate. And I think that, first of all, it should be denied on its face because, well, number one, they don't even get the namesake of roots right, they keep calling it pure land. Number two, they have no standing. And number three, their reasoning is completely without any factual support. They're basically saying, we don't like your decision, and we're not, and we don't think you should follow the law. This is borderline frivolous. The Sacred Roots has had to hire many documents in response to their frivolous appeal, and I think that it should just be denied and possibly, I don't know, if you have the ability to impose sanctions, because this is just, and then to submit things at the last minute that are completely different on its basis. Very unprofessional, and it should not be permitted. And if there's any questions, I'm happy to ask.
Thank you. Council, any questions at this point? Okay. So what we're going to do now is we're going to go ahead and open up for public comment.
Public comment is not open for item 11.1, the appeal filed by Max Del Real. Now taking public comment from John Clarici.
Good evening, Mr. Clarici.
Hi there, can you hear me? Oh, thanks. Good evening, good evening, council. I only came in halfway through this item, so I apologize, I didn't hear the first part. I did get to listen to Mr. Del Rio and then the attorney for the folks there in Diamond Springs, and I'd like to just point out a couple of things. One is, I agree, bringing documents in the day of is always annoying, and I'm always a little suspicious about people's motivations when they do that. It's kind of like they're trying to just muddy up the waters a little bit, and I agree, I don't think it's particularly professional. I mean, this meeting was supposed to happen on Tuesday, does that mean that they didn't think of any of this stuff on Tuesday, and then they just dropped it on Thursday? I'd also like to point out that if you recall, when we were looking at the original maps, the entire town of Placerville is basically a variance, because if you recall, if you applied the state's standards to the city and the way everything's laid out and, you know, there's, you know, schools and churches and parks, all the things that were these kind of text stone places, I think there were like two parcels over behind the office mats where you could actually sell cannabis in town, because the rest of the town had been sort of, you know, lined out essentially, and then that's when we kind of said, well, we'll shrink down these things and we'll assign certain areas, that's when we decided not to do it in the old historic part of Main Street and all of that. So this idea of, you know, there's like this, there might be a particular part of town that is sort of like, well, you can't do it there because of the locations of a church and a school, I find that just to be, I, it's late and I'm tired, I'm going to say it's just silly. The other thing too is, and this is, you know, the other thing too is, I'm always a little, I mean, we all love children, but when people roll in the room and say, well, this is really about the kids. We're not worried about trying to make money selling weed in Placerville, what we're really worried about is the children now, and this is what we're going to do. I would like to remind the person who's bringing this appeal, those same children that come out of that school or come from that church will walk by a bar and a brew pub, and they can actually physically see people drinking, and occasionally probably overdrinking, and then whatever behavior goes along with that. So this idea, and the way that these cannabis stores are going to be, they're going to be fairly innocuous almost, you won't really know, there's not like there's going to be a lot of advertising out in front, there are a lot of rules about the signage and whatnot. So I'd like to just point that out, is if there's something that's going to pollute these poor children's minds, they may have already seen that prior to they get to this sort of shoebox with a cross out in front of it, they sell cannabis. The other thing too is, most of these children are going to be going home to places where the parents may very well be legally ingesting cannabis of one kind or another, and so, you know, when I hear this, I kind of go, I have a sneaking feeling this is not about children. This is about a team that came in, whatever the number was, seven.
Thirty seconds.
Figure out a way to get one of the golden tickets from Willy Wonka, and I don't think you folks should help them with this. Kelly and Summer were by far the best team that we interviewed, they were the best team in their application, they have children, by the way, and so they're not like these people that are going to be wanting to corrupt children, they actually have two of their very own, and I'm sure their welfare is very important to them. So I think you should, you know, A, you should be in favor of a good business coming into town, which I have every confidence that they will have a good business, and you should reject this appeal because, once again, I just think it's an act of desperation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clarici.
Mr. Mayor, we have the appellant who is raising his hand to speak, but there is no, there are no other comments from the public.
Okay, yeah, I'll give three minutes.
Okay, actually, we do have, we have caller 857, if you'd like to take him before we go back to Max.
My turn?
It is.
Okay, so that was very interesting, listening to the argument. If there was no mention of a variance within the ordinance, you need to really consider that. This stuff was thrown together so quick, and I really wanted to complain a lot of times about your language, but I really did just trust you guys. So now we're getting down to the trust. We have a business that, as the crows fly, is in violation of our local ordinance. We heard that jurisdictions are increasing those distances, but you just, that is law, right? You have to say 250 feet, 1,000 feet, whatever, you just have to use your common sense. Are the kids coming and going right next to this business, right? And they are, they're coming and going to school right down that street. It's up to enforcement if these guys are sitting out on the porch smoking a big stogie or if they're inside hidden. That's up to enforcement. But I gave you guys a lot of leeway, trusting you would do the right thing, and if you grant this variance, I'm thinking you violated my trust. So if you violated my trust, I think I just have to go to the next person and the next person until somebody else comes along that will uphold my values and morals. I don't really care that the state mandated that we have to allow this. I'm looking for somebody that will fight against the state on their judgments and their commandments, that we have to do things a certain way. That's the person I'm looking for to lead this city. That's all.
All right, thank you, Michael.
We'll take public comment from Sue, go ahead.
So this is an appeal against the approval of the variance, and as I'm reading this, and I would support the appeal. The state law required 600 feet minimum from sensitive uses, and the city chose to go down to 250 because they said if they did the standard state 600 feet, that they wouldn't be able to have any. So you agreed to 250, then I think you need to honor that, because that's still actually a reduction of like 350 feet from what's normally approved by the state. Okay, thanks, bye.
Thank you, Sue.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we will open public or comment back up to Max Del Real, go ahead, Max.
Thank you, Regina, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the opportunity, just a couple final quick comments, and I appreciate the callers and their comments as well. In the larger scheme of things, and I'm not in Sacramento today, I'm, my heart is in Placerville, and I want you folks to do the right thing for your community. I represent a team that essentially came to Placerville in good faith, partnered with a local gentleman, Mr. Eddie Del Fino, who has, you know, has long history in Placerville, so does his family throughout the county. We identified a property, we were the only We identified a property, we were the only applicant that actually was prepared to purchase our property at the time. We identified two local nonprofits, the Boys and Girls Club of Eldorado County and the Eldorado Foundation as our nonprofit partners. And we came to play ball. We came to essentially work in full transparency with the city through this process. We wanted to create 20 new jobs. We wanted to obviously pay the cannabis tax. We wanted to be in business. We love Plaserville. I grew up actually just on 193 out by Georgetown. I, a lot of my history is local, but none of that matters. And I don't want to make this personal. I don't want to go after their attorney. I don't want to talk to the former council member, I believe he's, he's on the take. With all of that said though, I will say this. There are, there are facts.
You know what? Just a second, just a second there. I think you need to establish some findings that you say that one of our former council members is on the take. Do you have any, that, do you have any proof of that?
Well, I'll be honest with you, Councilmember Vice Mayor, I'm very concerned about Mr. Clarici's last comments in the last go-round where he said, and I quote, that none of the scores mattered, that it was all about passion and local connection. Here's the truth. You folks are about to break-
Hey, wait a minute, wait a minute. You didn't answer my question. Do you have any proof?
Well, I don't in front of me. No, sir. I don't.
Thank you.
I don't.
Go ahead.
But I do have, I do have certain statements that lead me and others to have to believe certain things. If you pass an ordinance and you put out a law, everyone's supposed to follow that law. That, that's the rules of not just California, but that's America. That's, that's my America. And the city of Plaserville published ordinance 1694, and I again refer you back to section 528250, which says very clearly, no cannabis business can be located less than 250 feet from a K-12 school, a youth center, and a daycare. This particular company is three strikes, you're out. Put yourself in my shoes. What, what, what can we believe? What can we interpret other than perhaps there were certain conversations behind closed doors that said, look, we do this, we'll get you a variance, we'll push you through the process? I'm concerned for Plaserville right now. And it has nothing to do with my business. It has to do with a precedence. You're the only city in California that wants cannabis retail businesses in the backyard of schools. And I will say this much, I stand by my original 34-page, very detailed, very extensive appeal whereby I actually included a letter from the superintendent of schools and the principal of Sierra Elementary, both of which don't want this business at that location. And so I would encourage you to go very slow in your decision-making process tonight because I think there's a lot of stuff at play. I can tell you right now that my team wants one thing. We want to open a business in Plaserville. We're prepared to do that. We also have luxury. We also have the legal right to say, no, this isn't okay. This isn't a moral or justified action. And we stand by our appeal. And as, as a new would-be business or as someone that's showing up to do business in Plaserville, especially during these economic times, a really odd message is being sent to us. And that is, some people don't have to follow the law because they have kids here or they're locals or they know more people than you. And others, the law is, is, you know, set in stone, you have to follow it. And if you trace back the steps, I believe, and I know Pierre Rivas would, would look at this a second time if it was on his desk, I do not believe this group should have ever received a zoning verification letter for a business that broke the fundamental rule law of the commercial cannabis business ordinance impossible. It should never have passed phase one. I appreciate your time, and again, available for any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll give Regina three minutes to the applicant as well. If they have any other comments.
Yes, we do have Xenia, the applicant's attorney, who wishes to speak.
Go ahead, Xenia.
I just want to point out that we keep coming back to this issue that, that there was no legal way to get the variance. Even their attorney put right in their document that there is a legal way going through the zoning provision. Also, the appellant keeps arguing about 1694 and ignores ordinance 1695, which is all about the variance. So it is in the law. It is part of the law. Their attorney recognized it as part of the law. Mr. Rivas had every right and actually obligation to examine the variance provisions, to look at the factors of whether there is a, somebody's benefiting like nobody else. Nobody else applied for a variance. It's not like Sacred Roots got a bonus. Nobody else applied for one. Nobody else asked for one. What they did is completely in compliance with ordinances, and the ordinances are clear, both the cannabis ordinances and the zoning ordinances. And therefore, their argument is just simply frivolous.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and bring this back to the council for further discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to hear from the city attorney based on his, get his takes at this point.
Okay.
While the various comments from both sides of the appeal are brushing his legal line, share with us.
Be happy, too. First of all, I want to point out that the cannabis business ordinance has been referred to as a business ordinance solely. Well, it's not. It contains many provisions that are consistent with zoning law. The 250-foot requirement is the equivalent of a setback requirement. There's also other provisions in the ordinance about, you know, location, et cetera, that are very much consistent with the zoning laws. The thing that I think, well, the last speaker mentioned this, and this I think is a very pivotal point. The cannabis business ordinance is the mechanism for a cannabis business to operate within the city of Plaserville. You could have the, the, what we've called the business ordinance, and you wouldn't have a business because it has no place to operate without the cannabis overlay. There's no place for any cannabis business to stop right in the city of Plaserville. This is what gives them the ability to do so. And it's an important thing, it incorporates the city's, all of the regulations of the cannabis business ordinances are incorporated in the overlay ordinance, specifically refers to them as part of the guidelines, design guidelines, and incorporates them into the ordinance. So you're really dealing with a planning or a zoning ordinance, and variances are very much a part of that. So what you've really got is the cannabis overlay zone is the starting point. And by incorporating the business ordinance into its, the zoning code and its development standards, then the 250-feet setback is actually subject to a variance, just like a 250 or any other, it wouldn't be 250, but let's say a lotline setback, those types of things. Very similar to that. So there is every ability that the city has to grant a variance in this situation. The city is not prevented from doing so. The zoning verification letter is literally a example of staff's consistent application and interpretation of this. And it's something the staff has carried through. So it's not something that they just decided to do specifically for Sacred Roots. It was there and available for every applicant to use if they chose to do it. I think that, that that's a red herring that you're being thrown in terms of the city's not having the ability to grant a variance. And I think it does because really, both the business ordinance and, well, the business ordinance has zoning provisions in it. So it's unfair to say it's strictly business regulations and you can't change that. But then when those regulations are incorporated into the zoning ordinance, it really becomes a zoning issue and one where a variance is very much appropriate. The last thing I'd like to say, and we really haven't heard any of this from the applicant standing. The Oregon ordinance regarding an appeal of a planning commission decision on a CUP requires that the applicant be directly and adversely affected. You have not heard any evidence as to how the applicant and the appellant in this place, in this case rather, is so affected. There's been no showing of standing. So I think you have numerous grounds to deny this appeal. And option one, as recited by Pierre Rivas, to me is the appropriate option that you should use in this, in deciding this, if you feel that those things are appropriate. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I have one. The whole state, I think the 600 feet of the state, I don't know, is that a guideline in terms of the state?
No, it's, it's a state, it's a state rule. However, the state has made an exception to that rule. And Business and Professions Code, I think it's 26054B, oh, and the Bureau of Cannabis Control Regulations, I think it's 5026B, allow for local jurisdictions to have lesser distances. And a lot of jurisdictions do have lesser distances. Plaserville's not the only one. But some of the things that we're seeing some of the jurisdictions do is reduce the amount of sensitive uses. We have a large number of potential sensitive uses. Some jurisdictions just have a couple. So there's different ways that jurisdictions are kind of reducing that, that distance, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Would, would it be safe to say the first hurdle that we need to consider is standing? And if we can't find, if there's not standing, then the rest of it is mute?
That's probably a fair statement, but we think, in all fairness, that you should decide not only the standing issue, but also the issue of whether or not the planning commission's decision is supported by substantial evidence and the variance is appropriate.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions for staff at this point?
No.
All right.
I want to maybe just ask Mr. Rivas if he had any, any information that he would like to respond to from this.
True. Yeah, Mr. Rivas, do you have any other, anything else you want to add?
Sure, I would just add, and this is basically what Mr. Driscoll has already stated, but just in detail, what was the, how did staff get from point A to point B in terms of looking at the 250 standard setback to where we now have a variance before you? Well, 10-5-25, that's in the zoning code. That's the CBO cannabis business overlay zone. Section E, regulations. The regulations under Title V, Chapter 28 of this code, that's the business code, shall supplement all development standards and general regulations in the underlying zone district, this being a commercial zone. So the commercial zone has all kinds of development standards in addition to those now that are added to by this provision. So as Mr. Driscoll pointed out, it's a development standard. And it says under 10-3-5, under variances, the commission may grant a variance to authorize a specific exception to any regulation of this chapter in accordance with the procedure specified in section 10-3-6 of this chapter. That's the variance process we went through. Went to the planning commission, they approved it. There was an appeal process, now it's before you. But that's a point A to point B to point C. And so I think staff fully disagrees with the appellant's argument that there's not a basis for us to even go through this variance application process. I think it's clearly is permitted in our codes. The only other thing I would like to bring to your attention, and this is just basically just to get perspective of it, I'm going to go, I'm using the GOT net. I don't, I don't know if I can get this on your screen. I would love to share screen this, but I can just talk about it. So what I've done is I put the cursor on the subject property on Main Street. So I can just draw a line. I'm heading west on Main Street, and I haven't even gotten across, I'm now to the, heading to the fourth parcel to the west. So we have the parking lot, we have the, those commercial buildings, and then we go. And so, once I get past where, where the independent restaurant is, to that next parcel over, I'm 353 feet. The point I'm making is you could have, that could have been a school or a daycare center or something. Say we're not arguing about the federated church and the Sierra School aren't there. But if the applicant were looking at this site, we could have had a sensitive use 353 feet. You could clearly see it and walk by it. It's really close. That would be a much greater impact, though it'd be in compliance with our code right there. If I go east to the other direction, so I go past Sierra Tire, and right now at the Midtown Mall, I'm at 348 feet. So what I'm saying is you could have had a school in the Midtown Mall, and this application could go through without a variance. So I think when you look at the exhibits in the staff report and you see that there really is no, other than the crow flies, because that's how the code reads and that's how the state code reads, but that's, it's the various procedure that allows the discretion of the council to look at this variable and that the intent of the setback is clearly being met. You cannot physically get across those businesses to the school, to the church, where if you had in close proximity, right there on the same street, you would have been allowed, where it would have been clearly visible, you could have clearly walked by it. So I guess my point in making is, you could see where it's very reasonable to grant the variance because these are exceptional circumstances in terms of the physical separation between the proposed cannabis location and the sensitive uses, the church and the school. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Pierre. Okay. Any comments or?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal and affirm the decision of the planning commission approving variance 20-01, reducing the distance from the proposed commercial cannabis business located at 651 Main Street to a sensitive use from 250 feet to approximately 186 feet. Adopt the findings of the planning commission and make the following additional findings. A, the appellant has not demonstrated an interest that is directly or adversely affected by the variance, and thus the appellant does not properly have standing to the appeal, the variance. And B, the planning commission's decision is supported by substantial evidence and no contrary evidence has been presented that warrants a different outcome.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table?
I'll second that motion.
All right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a first and a second. Do we have any further comments? All right, seen none. Ms. O'Connell, can we do roll call vote, please?
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Measure passes four zero. I want to really, I really want to thank Pierre and John for all the work on this. It was a lot. And I, and I know it took a lot of time and effort to put this together, not only at the planning commission level, but also when it, as it came here. So thank you for that. Also want to thank Vice Mayor Thomas for his comments on behalf of a citizen here in Plaserville, who was a volunteer and was impugned by Mr. Del Real. So I, it's unfortunate that that happened, so thank you, Vice Mayor Thomas, for doing that and sticking up for Mr. Clarici because that was completely inappropriate for somebody to make that type of statement to one of our residents. Okay. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move into items, item 12, our discussion and action items, and to item 12.1. And that's to adopt a resolution establishing a measure- And that's to adopt a resolution establishing a measure H fund construction reserve, to approve the measure H fund construction reserve policy as presented, to establish a measure L fund construction reserve, and to approve the measure L construction reserve policy as presented, and approve a budget appropriation to the measure L operating reserve in the amount of two-hundred thousand from fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And Mr. Warren has this for us this evening.
Mayor, members of the council. So historically, your capital improvement program, CLP projects funded by measure H and measure L were budgeted all-inclusive, assuming all estimated costs, including design and construction costs, were included in those budgets. However, due to a variety of unseen circumstances, such as hyperinflation in construction costs, underground utilities, excuse me, being in worse condition than originally anticipated, the discovery of contaminated soil, et cetera, et cetera, the original construction budget and the project contingency for some larger projects were found to be inadequate to fully fund the ultimate cost of completing the project. When this happens, staff utilizes the associated operating reserves, if available, which is a one-time funding source. Other funding sources, such as transportation grants, sewer enterprise fund if it's for sewer project, water enterprise fund if it's for a water project. But in most cases, we resort to liquidating the budgets of other projects, depending on the type of asset that is being constructed. For example, the city ended up having to liquidate eight other measure H and measure L projects to fully fund the mosquito road stabilization project recently. In order to do this, staff had to assess the funding status for each of those projects being liquidated. We then sought recommendations from the measure HL sales tax committee and brought the committee's recommendations to the city council to find approval. Budget records for all those projects that were liquidated were then updated accordingly. So a lot of, a lot of work. In an effort to avoid this type of situation and streamline the process, city engineer Neves came up with an idea of establishing construction reserves within the measure H fund and measure L fund for larger CIP projects that have a greater likelihood of experiencing budget shortfalls like this. Staff has prepared a construction reserve policy for both of the two funds for the city council's review. Based on the proposed policies, the construction reserves could be used for existing projects that were previously approved by the, or recommended by the measure H, measure L sales tax committee, and the project scope have remained essentially the same. If the scope of the identified project has changed significantly, the project will need to be brought back to the committee for further consideration. And we're defining a significant change in the scope of the project to include major changes in the size of the project, the location of the project, and/or the assets being improved by the project. In other words, if we change the assets significantly, that would be the qualifier for the, to have it go back to the committee. New projects, which also have to be brought back to the committee for review and consideration. Before the identified amounts of the construction reserves can be encumbered or expended by the, city council will need to approve the budget appropriations from the said construction reserve. In the future, staff plans on recommending budgets with just the design cost for larger projects. When these projects are ready for construction, staff will recommend budget appropriations from the construction reserves. In a nutshell, the proposed construction reserve policies would defer the construction budgets for larger measure H fund and measure L fund projects until such time when more accurate and timely information is available to better ascertain those costs. If approved tonight, staff would begin utilizing the construction reserve policies as recommended after the construction reserves have been fully funded for the measure H fund and measure L net revenues. The recommended actions were not included in the adopted fiscal year twenty twenty-one CIP budget. On August thirty-first of this year, the measure H, measure L sales tax committee recommended the city council approve a hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand, five-hundred-and-twelve-dollar budget appropriation from the measure H fund net reserves or revenue, excuse me, for the measure H fund construction reserve, a four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-five-dollar budget appropriation for the measure L fund net revenues for the measure L construction reserve, and a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget appropriation for the measure L fund net revenues for the measure L fund operating reserve, which is something we've had for a while. The committee also recommended that the city council approve the construction reserve policies for both the measure H fund and measure L fund that's included in your packet tonight. So with that, we respectfully request the council to approve the committee's recommendations. And city engineer Neves and I are available to answer any questions you may have about these policies.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Warren. Ms. Neves, do you have anything you wanted to add on the front end?
No, and, you know, Assistant City Manager Dave Warren did a great job summarizing it. You know, just as he mentioned, we had a lot of discussion with this with the measure HL committee, you know, who's been there with us as we've had to find additional funding for unforeseen expenditures on projects, or if we've had a situation where a project is not quite ready to go to construction. However, other projects have jumped ahead of it. So then we have had to find ourselves in a position where we had a pot of money essentially held hostage for a project that wasn't ready, and we've had to take that money out and move it over to another project to allow construction to move forward. So it's been quite, quite a hefty task when that's happened. And this gives us a little bit more streamlined ability to, you know, take care of what needs to be taken care, taken care of as far as construction, unforeseen issues, or even, even just as simple as awarding a construction contract if the bids come in higher than anticipated, which we've been pretty fortunate lately. Our brother and sister agencies around us have not been so fortunate in some of their CIP projects, but we have managed to be pretty fortunate. But I know folks are busy too right now, so that's all I have to add.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions at this point for staff? Regina, could we open the line for, whether it's Sue or if we have a member of the H and L committee, like to get their, their thoughts as well?
Sure, we'll start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hey, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. The measure H and L committee is recommending establishment of construction reserves to provide for surprises in sewer water, storm drains, and street projects without the need to withdraw funding from already approved projects and reallocate those funds to cover the nasty surprises in a project that is underway, and to take advantage of opportunities to improve ongoing projects when there is a nice surprise instead of a nasty one. Because Placerville is definitely a historic town, efforts to fix our streets from the ground up means there are unknowns under those streets, and it is much more cost-efficient to fix the unknowns while the street is open. After several years of changing funding allocations to deal with problem projects, the measure H and L committee recommends a construction reserve to handle these emergencies. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Okay, we're going to then go ahead and open it for public comment.
All right, public comment is open for item twelve point one, the measure H and L construction reserves, and we'll start with caller eight-five-seven.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
So I understand the reason for this request. I am concerned, though, that there'll be a pool of money sitting there that an administrator, unelected, unaccountable, can then delegate and spend. I really think you have to put some kind of controls in there if it reaches a certain dollar threshold, certain project percentage threshold, where you say, wait a minute, this triggers it coming to council for approval. I think we can all understand that projects can get very expensive, very fast, lots of unknowns, but we still all need to understand that we have trust in the system, right? That some unelected official isn't just giving a contract, I'm not saying anything bad, just to, some unelected official goes, hey, there's a bunch of money here, I'm going to hire my friend I used to work with at this company, just to, or. So you need to put controls in there at some level where it triggers it coming back to city council and a public comment review. That's my request. Because if they say, all of a sudden we can't do this, we have to change it to now there's four bike lanes and twelve sidewalks, the public might come back and say, wait a minute, that doesn't sound appropriate. So please create some kind of trigger at some level where there's a public review availability. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Last call for public comment on item twelve point one. No further comments, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thanks, thank you, Regina. So just on Mr. Drovich's comments on the oversight, so there is, if you, if you go to attachment B on the, on the res, where the resolution is, attachment B on the bottom, approved project budgets, so it reads, before expending CIP project costs from the measure L fund construction reserve, the city council must approve a budget appropriation from the measure L construction reserve for these costs. Any unspent budget appropriations from the measure L fund construction reserve shall remain in the, in the said reserve until such time they are re-appropriated by the city council and expended on other measure L fund projects. So there is some language in there. I, I'm, if I missed something or if I misread that, but I think that, that would be the oversight that would still be on these, on these funds.
I spent some time with Dave Warren going over this, because I, I had similar questions as Mr. Drovich did, as well as I, I really wanted to understand why we were going through this, this process. And I, and I don't know that, you know, I think he was being somewhat modest and not wanting to share, that just the inordinate amount of time and energy that goes into moving all this money around to different accounts while making sure that all these accounts and he is being accountable for the funds that are transferred in and out of these accounts to, to one, demonstrate what he's doing and, and do it appropriately, and two, get the money to where it needs to go in a timely fashion so that it can be re-appropriated to the current challenge that we have, which, you know, this is an old town like they were talking about, and every hundred, you know, you know, some of these, some of these pipes are very old and we have, well, we all know this, we all know the scenario, which is why we're doing this. And so this really will cut down on the, on the amount of time, one, that Dave has to do and try and manipulate all this money to get it to the appropriate places, and two, allow the, the process to operate more efficiently in terms of getting the projects moving along when this happens. And I, and I fully support this, especially when I hear how much time and energy is spent working on these.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion, we adopt the resolutions, one through five.
All right, we have a first and a second.
Well, I just like to kind of appreciate Vice Mayor spending that time with our finance director and his comments, just now sharing that with the public, and I think that's very important. And I think this shows, you know, our engineering staff and our finance staff, our, and the measure HL committee are all working together. This is taking this to a, because we're being so successful, we are going on to the next level of financing for these projects. And as Dennis pointed out, this is going to take a lot of unnecessary work, I guess, streamline, streamline this effort. So I congratulate staff for bringing us to this point. And Mr. Drovich is concerned, I think they'll be very soon, according to the record, as projects move out now under his new method of the allocations and.
I, I thought it was a good question, and, and that, and that council oversight is still there on, on, on these, on these funds. So it was a good question and a good answer on, on that.
He comes up with some good ones, you know.
So with that, so we have a first and a second, let's go ahead and have roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I call roll, can I get a repeat on who seconded the motion?
I did. Can you not hear me down here?
Councilmember Acuna.
All right, thank you. All right, Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Dave, thank you, Rebecca. Okay, we're going to move on to item twelve point two, and that's to adopt a resolution approving the purchase of a used two-thousand-and-twenty fifteen-hundred pickup from Thompson's in the amount of thirty-one thousand for the abandoned vehicle abatement program, and authorize the chief of police to execute any related documentation, and two, approve a thirty-one thousand dollar budget appropriation from the abandoned vehicle abatement revenues for said purchase. And Chief Ren has this report for us.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening. Before use, staff report along with supporting documents requesting the purchase of a used two-thousand-and-twenty Ram fifteen-hundred from Thompson's Dodge. Also, second part of that is to approve in a budget, to approve a thirty-one thousand dollar budget appropriation in the abandoned vehicle abatement revenues for that purchase. City participates in a joint powers agreement with Eldorado County and the city of Southlake Tahoe for the abandoned vehicle abatement program. That program, its purpose is to keep a better handle on vehicles that would be considered hazardous by abandonment or a nuisance to a neighborhood. Currently, our, our community service officers participate in responding to complaints from the community regarding potential abandoned vehicles. Up until recently, they were utilizing a two-thousand-and-five Jeep Liberty that we had in our inventory due to lack of vehicles. We had to reallocate that vehicle to another purpose. So the only other option at, at, at that point was utilizing marked patrol vehicles. When I became interim police chief, I stopped that practice. I didn't want civilian employees driving around in marked patrol vehicles. So when they did have to respond, they, they were taking either their private vehicles or getting rides from officers to go out and investigate those complaints from the community. This program is funded through a dollar from registration fees because, and it's spread equally amongst, not equally, it's spread amongst the agencies based on population. What's happened over the last several years is that the program has been intaking more money than it's been spending. So the state currently put us on suspension, indicating that its, its purpose and intent is not a savings plan, it's to actually utilize those funds to go out and provide that service to the community. So they placed us on suspension, so we need to spend down that money. We've kicked around this idea about a vehicle, probably, I know I've talked about it for the last probably three-plus years, and trying to determine what we wanted in a vehicle. After becoming a chief and the promotion of Commander Muser, I asked him to go and negotiate with Thompson's Dodge to see if they could fit with that limited amount of money that we had for the expenditure. We knew with thirty-one thousand, we weren't going to be able to buy a new vehicle. So we're looking for a used vehicle, and in this case, Thompson's really stepped up, worked with us, and for the thirty-one thousand, we're actually getting more vehicle than what we're paying for. So that vehicle will be utilized for the vehicle abatement program primarily, but it also adds a little bit of utility to the department. We currently don't have anything heavy that could drag a trailer out, like the traffic speed trailer or anything like that. So part of the duties that the, a vehicle abatement officer can perform for us So, part of the duties that the, a vehicle abatement officer can perform for us during their typical day would be to relocate that traffic sign would be, would be an example of the number of things that they can do. I think I covered everything. If I didn't, I'm, I'm more than happy to try to answer for you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Any questions? Comments? Okay, let's go ahead and open up public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 12.2, the purchase of the AVA vehicle, and we'll start with caller 857.
Okay, I wasn't gonna comment, but if the police department doesn't have a pickup, they need a pickup. Absolutely. So, but I do have problems with the vehicle abatement program. Just, you know, how it, it's been a long time since I read that. But, like, say I have a 1970's classic car, but it's too valuable for me to drive and insure on the road. I park it in my driveway, and it's on, on, off. It's totally legal with California, but then somebody goes, "This car is parked in this driveway, it doesn't move." Well, so what happens? Can my local government come and seize my valuable collector car, turn around and sell it to somebody? That's a takings under the Constitution, and not reimburse me the full market value of it. Just, so, I'm getting off onto the vehicle abatement program more than the pickup. I mean, the police deserve a pickup, absolutely. But, just if somebody could address how the vehicle abatement program works and if it's constitutional, that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Last call for public comment on item 12.2. I see no further comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council.
Mayor, if I just, just a reminder, you did receive another written comment on this item from Nicole Gottberg, if you recall, regarding this and questioning whether or not a pickup was necessary or could a lesser vehicle be used. So, just wanted to remind you of that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to the council. Yeah, I was gonna, I was just gonna say, Chief, if you had any, any comment. I, I don't think we, we'd, we'd haul off someone's car.
That's, it's not, we wouldn't, we wouldn't participate in a program that, that goes out there and does something like that. I personally wouldn't. Part of my, my team's goals is to serve the community, not go out and start taking property from them. If we do run into a scenario where there's a gross violator, you know, we'll, we go through a process to work with them to ensure they fall back within compliance. And, you know, there's a due process mechanism that kicks in. You know, we would have to get a court order from the judge to go pull the vehicle, stuff like that. It's never gotten to that point here, and, and I, I cannot even imagine a scenario where that would occur. Most of the time, what we see is people who have abandoned vehicles around town. And either we can't find the registered owner because it's been so far expired that we, you know, it's fallen off the DMV records, or it's a vehicle that somebody has junked and stripped, and, and then that's, that's the intent of the program that we run here internally. Some of the stuff, the yard cars or the vehicles on streets that people have let, fallen to a state of disrepair, that's a, that's a door knock from us, and we kinda educate them what we're looking for and the reason why we, we do what we do. I can't think of a, a time since I've been here at Placerville that we've had to tow a vehicle from somebody utilizing the AVA program, but we have responded to a lot of complaints to, to help educate people and get them back into compliance with what the ordinance and laws are requiring.
Thank you, Chief. Vice Mayor?
Uh, thank you, Chief. Could you tell the story of this $31,000? Because, you know, there's, there's a lot of, there's money, there's pots of money around all the time where, where we're spending it just because we have it. And it seems like we, I'm not saying that that's what we're doing here, but it does give the air or appearance that we just have $31,000 and we're just spending it because, because it almost seems like we forgot we had the money, or did, or, or did this money, did you become aware of this money at some point in time? And how long has it been sitting there?
For a while. When I came on board in 2016, the agency I previously worked at, I was actually a sergeant in charge of a number of things. One of those things was our abandoned vehicle abatement program, so we took a look at that and what we were currently doing. We were falling short, so we tried to make changes in, in phases to appropriately utilize those funds that were given to us. And we just, we, we never, we, we never were. Part of it was, and I purchased a vehicle at the previous agency I worked at, and I said, "Well, we, we have this money, it's not a whole lot of money, and it doesn't deplete our account. There's still money in our AVA, AVA funds. It's just bringing it back down to a level where we can start falling back within compliance by the state, and they can start contributing back into that fund again." So, that $31,000 was kind of a, a, a target mark for us where we were looking for a vehicle. All kinds of challenges with that. Anybody that's purchased a vehicle lately or looked at vehicles lately, I mean, you're not gonna get much for $31,000. So, you know, I, I, anytime I can, I support local business. So, Commander Muser and myself went to Thompson's, had a conversation with them, and they actually found this vehicle for us. So, we utilized those local resources and businesses to assist us in the locating of the vehicle. Kudos to Thompson's, just a fantastic business. So, we, we truly, I think the vehicle blue books, if we had to buy it with tax, licensing, everything else, would be forty, anywhere from $42,000 to $44,000, would be my guess. So, we're, when I say we're getting, we're getting more vehicle than what we're paying for, it, it, it's a good thing. It's actually helping out.
Thank you. I don't wanna imply that we've done anything wrong or that I, that I think I'm suggesting that. It is that, and we're using it for the appropriate purposes that the money's for. There's, you know, I look at funds of monies that are sitting there, and it happens a lot in, in road construction where it's only allocated for specific uses, and you can only use that pot of money for this. And I, and I, and I, if I understand it correctly, that's exactly what we're having to do here, is this is narrowly defined how this money can be spent. It can only be spent for the program of vehicle abatement.
Absolutely. And, and because we've stopped getting money in from the state, that, that, so we target, I, I can't remember the exact amount that's in the fund right now, I don't have it in front of me. But, just say where there's $35,000. Because we're sus- under suspension, that $35,000 doesn't grow. It's capped at $35,000. So, we'll never see a replenishment of, of the program funds until we get below the cap that the state has set, set for us.
And the reason I bring this up, and this is very important to me, I don't wanna, I don't want us to be taxed anymore than we absolutely have to. And I think that, you know, you know, this, this fund is done specifically for this reason, and it's appropriate to use it for that. And I, and I, and I actually appreciate the fact that the state would, would take it, would actually stop taxing because the money hasn't been spent yet. And, and, and I'm a big believer, we shouldn't be taxed anymore and we absolutely should have to. And in this state, that doesn't seem to be a, a theme most often, but in this case, it was, and, and I appreciate you finding those funds and making them usable as well. So, thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Acuna.
Chief, I'm gonna turn my head, I have to speak towards the folks so you can hear me. Is it, are we implying that the state is not collecting that dollar in Eldorado County right now while we're in suspense?
Can't hear you, Joe.
Joe, we lost your volume.
Better?
Yep.
I, I, you know, the county is responsible for the collection of those fees and the, and the dispersment. All I know is the notification that I received a while back was that we're, we're under suspension from the state, so the, the money's not growing. They, they, they were looking at it as, you know, the, the money's allocated for a specific purpose from the state to the county, and then to be dispersed through the, through the guidelines of the JPA, and, and not intended to be a savings account, which is what it turned into be. So, you had these large pots of money between three, three different organizations that weren't spending the money down, so.
So, it was all of Eld- it wasn't just us, it was like all of Eldorado County that was on the suspension list?
Yeah, it was a com- it was a combination, but because we're all that one entity, the JPA entity, and we all contribute to the suspension of it.
Got it. Yes, Vice Mayor?
I'll move that we approve the purchase of the 2020 Ram 15 pickup truck for Thompson's Dodge.
Second?
All right, we have a first and a second. You have a comment?
Little additional information. I actually sit on the JPA, represent the city, and we meet about once a year. Some, we're supposed to meet twice a year, but we haven't met yet. The last time we met, it was the recommendation of the JPA to go ahead and authorize this fund amount to the City of Placerville to spend. The money is not coming to the county because we aren't spending it, spending it. That is a joint JPA with the City of Southlake Tahoe and the county. John Hydall is the county, he's the chair. And one of the things that caused this surplus was several years ago, or a sheriff ago, I'll say, that, a former sheriff actually funded a full-time deputy position to go out in the county and do vehicle abatement. So, that included a 40-hour officer, vehicles, staff, that's, you know. So, you can see where the fund flowed freely.
A lot of money.
Current administration does not utilize deputy positions in that manner. I don't believe code enforcement people are allowed to spend the money, so the, the fund grew. And so, there has been, there's been oversight on this all along. Former Councilmember Thomas was on the JPA for a number of years.
Yep.
So, it's, and, yeah, so, it's one of those strange things, but it's out there, it absolutely has to be used for vehicle abatement, and it sounds like the quality of the vehicle we're gonna get, it will last us a long time, so that's great.
It also sounds like, yep, not only for that, but for other uses, even emergencies. You know, if somebody needs that bigger truck or whatever, I think that's a great...
Yep. All right, so we, we do have a, we have a first and a second. We'll go ahead and do roll call.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you, Chief. If, if, if people really wanna get wound up on a, on a fund, look at the CRV fund that we all pay into for these bottles of water, and how much money is sitting in there, and how much actually gets used for anything. It is a cottage industry unto itself for, you know, public relations campaigns, but beyond that, I'm not sure exactly what's happening. But, it is a sinkhole to Vice Mayor's comments on taxes that are not completely clear on what they actually achieve. I digress. Uh, item 12.3.
Mayor, before you get going on this particular item, I'm gonna need to recuse myself as I have property within the scope of this project, and so, I'm out.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We, we'll, we'll wait for him to go into our, our cha- our, our secret chambers. All right, so the Vice Mayor accused on this, on this item, so that's item 12.3, and that's adopt a resolution approving contract amendment number five with REY engineers in the amount not to exceed $24,537 for the Broadway sidewalk project, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same. And Ms. Neves has this for us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you this evening proposes an approval of amendment to the design contract for, with REY engineers for $24,537 for this federally and locally funded Broadway sidewalks project. The scope of this project includes gap closure to existing pedestrian facilities in the form of installing curb, gutter, and sidewalk where none currently exists on Broadway, from Mosquito Road to Chanel School Road, which is at the western limit of the Upper Broadway project that's currently under construction and wrapping up. We've progressed into design, utility coordination, and right-of-way. Additional unforeseen design services have become necessary to address roadway grade and conform and drainage improvements as part of the project's scope and as the subject matter of this item. To date, this project is funded with both federal and local money through the Highway Safety Improvement Program, gas tax, and Measure L to address the roadway and drainage improvements I've previously mentioned. And the current project expenditures, including the proposed amendment amount, is within the existing budget. No additional preparations are needed for this item. This project is anticipated to go to construction in 2021. In addition to the scope within this project, it's intended to be combined with the Broadway Maintenance Project, which includes full utility assessment of water, sewer, and storm drain mains, in addition to pavement rehab within the same project limits from Mosquito Road to Chanel School Road, to be funded directly with Measure L. That project will be brought back to council at the next meeting for design services and is set to go into construction alongside with this project in 2021. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you, and that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Neves. Any questions? Okay, no questions at this point? We'll go ahead and open up public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 12.3, contract amendment number five with REY engineers. I see no public comments, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, there is one. It always happens right when I say, "No public comment." We have caller 857, go ahead.
Thank you, Regina.
Just a quick question. There was mention of federal and local funds. What are the percentages between the two? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, no further public comment, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, great, thank you. We'll go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to the council. If I'm looking at this correctly, it looks like, what, two-thirds is federal funding? If I'm looking at this correctly, 226,000, or, on the, oh, that's the overall. But, oh, all right, because I might know what I'm talking about, apparently. I'll let, I'll let Ms. Neves answer that.
It's late, you know, I get it. So, currently, right now, we have about 60, just shy of $64,000, or, sorry, excuse me. It's late. 64% of the funding is federal funds. H SIP kinda comes at a little bit different proration, proration than a lot of other funding sources. For example, HBP funds are 11.47 match as well as CMAC. H SIP is kinda calculated a little bit differently. The other part, too, is any of the local funds that we have on this is covering items that H SIP, it's not eligible under H SIP, but it is eligible under Measure L. So, as far as the construction funding goes, though, that is actually gonna be covered substantially by H SIP for this portion of the project. I did mention the other portion of the project is the Broadway site, or Broadway Maintenance Project that was a 1920 project that was approved as part of the regular budget process. And that one is, at this time, you know, when it comes back at the next meeting, that one is currently solely funded with Measure L. So, does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I'll move for approval of the item.
All right, we have a first and a second. Further comments? See none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on. Oh, actually, we'll wait for the Vice Mayor to come back. Okay, moving on to item 12.4. This is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city engineer to negotiate an agreement with Lighted Up in the amount of $8,400 to reinstall decorative lights on Main Street between Sacramento Street and Cedar Ravine Road, and maintenance of the community Christmas tree lights in preparation of the upcoming holiday season. And two, authorizing the city engineer to execute the same. And three, approve a budget appropriation in the amount of $8,400 in fiscal year 2021 from the downtown business surtax for set agreement. And again, this is Ms. Neves.
Thank you. I know this has been kind of a decade of a year for everyone, but believe it or not, we're nearing the end. And one of the holidays and events that puts us directly into that mode is just the general holiday season and Christmas season, and specifically the lighting of the community tree and dressing up Main Street for the holidays. You may recall, council approved last year a similar contract, both of which were a hit for our community, both the market lights and the Christmas tree lighting. And they also promoted the downtown corridor businesses, when actually the lights were removed in February, because they were such a popular item amongst the community and businesses, through public comment received, council-directed staff to reinstall this September. Unfortunately, September got away from us, but we were able to get the market lights up from Sacramento Street to Bedford Street this month, at a substantially cheaper amount since we'd already purchased and cared for the lights from last year. The contract before you also includes expanding the market lights to the east to include the segment of Main Street from Bedford Avenue to Cedar Ravine Road. Work includes also the maintenance of the tree lights, as well as some of which were damaged in a March windstorm. As we prepare for this holiday season, we're moreover looking ahead to community events and moving forward a different direction for the Festival of Lights than what we've, and we're temporarily evolving it into a virtual event that we're calling Miracle on Main Street, in conjunction with local faith-based groups, including Bayside Placerville, Green Valley Church, Vantage Church, just to name a few, as well as several community members, community leaders, and business owners. Our beloved community does have many members that are considered high-risk for COVID, and under normal circumstances, they wouldn't be able to participate in the tree lighting ceremony. Presenting this event virtually does allow the opportunity for high-risk folks to stay out of the cold and stay physically distanced for health reasons as needed. The virtual event is scheduled for November 27th at 6:00 PM, where the community tree will be lit. Funding to support this contract is secured through the 2021 Downtown Business Surtaxes that are dedicated to supporting Main Street businesses. Staff's recommendations are summarized in the report before you, and that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Public comment is now open for item 12.4, the Lighted Up Decorative Lights. We'll start with 857. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Just wondering, hopefully, no one on this contract is a current or former city employee or elected. Hopefully, you guys vetted that. I'm all for all the Christmas lights. But an honest question is, the Christmas tree that we all refer to there, you know, beside the courthouse, by the post office, who actually owns that parcel that the Christmas tree sits on? Is that the city's property where there's some memorials and stuff? Who actually owns and controls the Christmas tree? That would be interesting, alongside the question of who is this contract going to? Hopefully, it's not a insider, something like that. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Last call for public comment regarding the decorative lights. And no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll bring it back, close public comment, bring it back to city council. We own that, that lot.
Yeah, this came up because of another issue, basically because of the disposition of the old DA building or the old post office. Councilmember Acuna and I were actually looking at that, and we did look at it, and yes, we do own that parcel where the, the, all of that is, the tree and the monument, et cetera, all of that.
Memorial Garden?
Yeah, we own all of that, yes. So, we control it.
Thank you.
I'll move for approval of the item.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other comments?
Lighted Up is just the contractor that does lighting, it's the same one that did it last year.
It's a regular lighting.
Yeah, it's not just, it's just, there's no backdoor dealings or, I don't think my brother has anything to do with it, so.
I'm, I'm really glad to see that we're extending them further east. I am, too. That's going to be great for Main Street, and I'm just, I'm excited for the holiday season. I'm excited to rain in the new year. Do it sooner. But that's, that's a good development. I'm, I'm happy to see that.
Thank you.
I just have a real quick comment that I, I'm really glad that we didn't leave the lights up. You know, it just, I think, you know, it's, it's making the season come alive by waiting, you know, and installing them later, so. I hope we continue that.
And, you know, I, I would like to point out that, you know, you talk about, well, I won't talk about that, but there was, the putting up and working on the lights, a big effort, the ones that are up now is done by Veer Kampf at no charge to the city as a, as they give to the city. And it's all, you know, they, they had a crew out there at night, and they had flagging, they had, they had lift, lift trucks out there, and all donated, no charge to the city to get those current lights up. And that, that was Matt Veer Kampf and his crew was, did that. And I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, because I know the funding is, is really not there, either with the city or the downtown merchants. And so, that was a huge effort on their part, and thank you to Veer Kampf.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, well, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Because of the, the late portion of tonight, we could go quickly through these agency updates. Transit Authority? Next week, all right. Transportation Commission? Next week, love it.
I want, I, real quick, I will say that we did get the report that Tahoe, that Echo Summit is finished and open, and I think it's, you know, we're not going to, and also that there were, the, they have the virtual tour for members that wanted the, the El Dorado Hills business part. The, yeah, so they're working on that.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Councilmember Borelli. SACOG, we meet, we'll, we'll have a meeting next week. So, no, no update there. And Fire State Council.
Um, it's, the report's just about the same. They're, they're, you know, they're working diligently on trying to keep it before the public, to clear their property, and I think a lot of people are really paying attention. It looks to me, just driving around, I see a lot of, you know, and they're just stressing how important it is for folks to, to pay attention to the, you know, everything they're hearing.
All right, thanks, thank you, Councilmember Borelli. We did our requests for future items at the earlier part of the, the council meeting. So, we'll move on to item 15, city manager and staff reports.
I don't believe we have anything further.
All right, so upcoming items that are on there. We have a homeless update and presentation from Don Simone, the Pioneer Approval JPA, approval for Gold Book Park Tours, and Facility Coordinator, amongst other items. And so, I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at about 10:15. So, thank you, everybody, for listening, and for staff for all the work. Appreciate it. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.